...in valuation due to development. As you can see, through 1996 all the way to the 2012, the red line has been above the blue line, which means that the TIF has been capturing revenue. The red line does not represent the amount of dollars that we capture. Rather, what we capture is the difference between the red line and the blue line times 23 mils. So mils is broken out, again, in your TIF package on page 39. It will show you exactly what mils we are capturing. Besides the city, 25% of our dollars are captured from other taxing jurisdictions, including the drains, the smarts, and so forth. In 2012, you see the line, the red line below the blue line, which means just like you may have a home that's underwater, that is actually what is happening with the DDA. Property valuations are below the 1996 level, which basically translates into we are not capturing any money. We haven't captured any money this year. We don't expect to capture any money next year. Based on discussions with the administration and Oakland County, we think that June or July 1st of 2014 is probably the timeframe the valuation will stretch another out. So in addition to the property valuations, the only challenge that we have are the number of tax appeals that we've had to repay. This particular slide will show you the actual dollars and revenue that we are collecting. So from beginning in 2008, 2009, the DDA revenue, which is that 1.9 mils, we collected $390,000. The TIF at that same point in time collected $428,000. As you can see, the dollars have been declining ever since. If you look at our 2012, 2013, the DDA revenue is approximately $248,000. More than likely, we're going to come in a little lower than that. We haven't collected any revenue on the TIF. It's anticipated that for 2013 and 14, the DDA revenue will be approximately $200,000. And again, we will not collect any revenue under the TIF. So we have gone from a high in 2009 and 2010 of a little over a million dollars in tax revenue down to $200,000. And that's been the impact of evaluations as well as the property tax appeals. So what are some of the challenges that we face as we move forward? We spoke about declining property values. We spoke about property tax appeal refunds. We have a declining tax revenue stream. We have a lack of new development in the district. We have a surplus of obsolete properties. We've got some buildings that, quite frankly, are very difficult to redevelop. We have an insufficient daytime workforce, meaning we don't have enough people during the afternoon to support retail development, such as restaurants and so forth. We have to stabilize a tax increment financing plan and revenue if we are going to continue doing projects, such as infrastructure and so forth. And we have a negative location perception for a number of different reasons. One of them is primarily we border Detroit. The other is that, quite frankly, you know, we haven't had a lot of new businesses that have come into the area. So that's something that we continually battle, and it's a reality. I want to talk a little bit about some of the accomplishments that we have done over the course of two and a half years. The first one is the acquisition and the sale of vacant land property formerly known as Amadean. Since my time here, I know that it has been a big issue amongst the citizens of the city, as well as city council, as well as the DDA board. Through our board and their vision that they had, as well as the council, we've been able to acquire the property and in turn have sold it to Oakland Community College. It's that we have the sale and redevelopment of the Rutland Drive property. It's a property which the DDA formerly owned, which we sold through a doctor for redevelopment. Public improvements. We have sidewalks, bus stops, and trash receptacles that we've installed. And I will look right along Rutland Drive near the college, we've installed sidewalks up along North Park Avenue. We've also have installed and completed sidewalk projects along Providence and Nine Mile. Couple of examples of public infrastructure that we've been able to close out. We were working, as some of you may recall, on a lighting project that would have provided new lights along JL Hudson Drive as well as Northline Drive. Unfortunately, because of the property tax appeals, we've had to put that project on hold. We've also put trash receptacles throughout the district. And while they may seem simple, it gives people and individuals somewhere to put their trash, which isn't always the case. We've had a very successful retention effort maintaining a half administrative offices in what's known as Tower 14, which is that building right there. They not only signed a new five-year lease, but they also wanted additional space. That retention effort maintained 500 jobs in our district. And while they were looking in Southfield, if this particular company had left, I would have been left with another vacant building, less 500 people. Now the building is about 85% occupied and drawing tax base and having new majors there. We've also had a couple of business attraction wins, and those include Fifth Third Bank, which is located in Fred Nager's property up along where Kroger's and CVS is. Recently, there was a memo that I sent to council regarding the Phoenix Medical Group. It's a new medical group that has moved into the medical office buildings in front of Providence. That particular move is forcing 100 new employees, 100 employees from Providence to move into the IBM building. So the IBM building's occupancy rate is going to go up with that new 100 additional people. One of the first items I spoke to the board about when I first started here was that I thought it was important that we develop a proactive, aggressive communication strategy. I've always thought that unless you begin to introduce yourself to particular developers and businesses, the likelihood of them finding you is remote. So one of the first items that we developed and we discussed was developing a proactive business retention and attraction strategy. More jobs are created by companies that are here in your area. Having said that, we continuously meet with a lot of our stakeholders, including Providence Hospital, HEP, Macy's, Fox Two TV, Oakland Community College, and our residential condo owners along Providence. We meet quarterly with them and provide them updates and gather their input in terms of what their issues and concerns are in the district. We also attend certain trade shows where we have been able to identify potential development in the area. The International Council Shopping Center, which is a trade show where most large retailers, malls, retailers come together in one area and we're able to identify and discuss the city of Southfield. There's a biomed conference that is occurring here shortly. One of our items that the board has identified is the continued proactive economic development strategy of talking to health-related companies. In our particular area, we have approximately 5,200 employees in healthcare. It's primarily driven by Providence. We have Health Alliance Plan, that's another 500 employees. We've got the college with their life science curriculum that allowed them to invest $25 million. We have ancillary point-of-service doctors throughout the district. We have a plasma center, and while the outside may not look all that well, if you go inside, it's a very impressive operation. So there are a number of healthcare-related entities in the district that we want to continue building on. We have developed for each of our properties, and again, this is in your package, a cheat sheet of all the potential development properties in the area. This is just one example that we use when we go out and speak to developers and companies. I want to mention that our efforts are not without the city of Southfield's team, which includes Brett Zorn, Terry Crowe, and Shelley Freeman. So we are out there together as a team, not only marketing the DDA, but marketing the city of Southfield. I mentioned the proactive development strategy, and one of the first things that we developed was the SDVA webpage. Before I got here, we were formerly known as the Cornerstone Development Authority. Everybody would confuse us with Cornerstone Schools. If you look at Michigan, most DDA's are known by the city DDA. So again, with the vision of our board, they've agreed to rebrand ourselves, so we're now known as the Southfield Downtown Development Authority. Our webpage was probably three layers deep. If a developer was interested in locating in our district, they'd have a hard time finding us. So this is some of the reasons that we thought it was important for us to develop our own webpage. We've also included the bulletin, the e-bulletin, which you are all familiar with. It's based on the premise of telling developers and telling the public what a great area you are, sort of based on the governor's relentless positive news. What we try to do is we try to educate people in terms of why it's best to locate in Southfield. All right? You've got a great location. You have an available workforce. You've got a visionary city council. You have fiscal stability. Those are all important. Jackie, go back if you would, please. That's what the newsletter is about. The newsletter identifies opportunities and new jobs and tax base that comes into the district. We are branding ourselves as, you may have heard the cliche, med and ed, medical and education. Those are our two largest assets that we have. Between OCC's growth in life science, Providence's continued investment of $42 million, which includes an ER, which includes private rooms, the cancer center, it would not make any sense if we didn't leverage those assets to the best of our ability. And honestly, through the newsletter and through those two entities alone, we probably have gotten more looks from developers than we have in a while. Now, one of the things that we have included with your package, and this is an example of what we do when we go out and talk to developers. Jackie, could you go to the next slide, please? All right, this is a picture of our webpage. We get a lot of compliments on this. This particular one talks about our healthcare corridor, and then we have ancillary stories on the side, and they have a great picture of the Health Alliance Plan. In your package, we normally provide a marketing package to developers and businesses. This includes identification of our healthcare, the center of it all. We talk about the center of business development being in the city. This is a glance at our healthcare initiative. We went out and we asked Anderson Consulting to provide us an analysis of what our healthcare initiative would do for the area in terms of jobs and tax base. This is a particular snapshot of that effort. But again, it's very effective when we're out dealing with healthcare-related companies and/or real estate developers and/or retailers. I've always believed that you need to drive economic development before you can do community development. You need a daytime base in order to support your retail. We've also have in there an example of what we take from some of our conferences. Again, this is material that we put in a package, and quite frankly, it stimulates discussions. We have been in a number of periodicals. Drains, this one is real estate, Heartland Real Estate. Again, the purpose is talking about what are the benefits of locating in Southfield, talking about our opportunities, talking about our healthcare initiative. You know, we talk about economic development as a key component to what our success is. And occasionally, what we do is we leverage our partners. So part of the package includes a couple of letters from Providence Hospital and Oakland Community College as we were pursuing Costco. Costco was interested in the lower count quadrant, this area right here. This quadrant right here, we have shown to Walmart, Costco, and Menards. But without efforts as Providence and OCC have given us, it would have been a more difficult decision. Now, we haven't been successful with any of those yet, but at least we had the opportunity to speak to them. From Walmart's perspective, the acquisition of the property was way too high to get any return on investment. It was almost $12 million to try and acquire that property. From Costco's perspective, we actually made it to the board of directors, but it was because of our proximity to Madison Heights, where they came back and indicated they were going to draw 45% of their sales from Madison Heights, that they eliminated that site. Menards continues to have a discussion with us. As you know, they've been very active throughout southeast Michigan. Also in this group of letters is an example of a letter that I developed when I either read something in the paper, hear something on the street. But it's a proactive approach to again introduce us to companies and developers. And this one was actually written to Beckton Dickinson Company. They had acquired a facility out of state. When those opportunities exist, you never know which way it's going to go. Are they going to move the Michigan operation to the other state, or are they going to move the other state to Michigan? It's those kinds of opportunities that we need to be upfront on. Again, just an example of some of the proactive marketing that we have done. Over the course of two, two and a half years, we have introduced ourselves to about 80 to 85 developers and companies. We have provided the city two opportunities for new development, which hopefully city council will learn about very shortly. New investment in the district, daytime population. Having said that, that includes a PowerPoint. What I'd like to do, just briefly walk you through the district so that you have a feel for what is happening. As you know, if you look near Mount Vernon, we are pretty well developed with cornerstone development. Fred Nager, I hear, the board number, has a nice development with Kroger, CVS, Canary Crabs, and so forth. As you continue down Reef Field, there's really not a lot of opportunities for new development. We have Huntington Bank, Five Guys and a Burger, continuing down, you've got the advanced buildings down through here, you have a little bit of Providence, Art Van, and then a little retail development. Come across, you've got a Wendy's, you have CSL Plasma. Here's an opportunity here. This is the old Montgomery Ward Bay. Continuing down, you have a Firestone, and you have a campus. A common thing that is not to our advantage is that 85% of our buildings are owned by developers outside of Michigan, who I don't believe have our best interests. So anytime we're able to have a new owner that's Michigan-based, I think that helps our cause. As you come down to Eight Mile, you have the AT&amp;T Building, and you have the old Home Depot Building. That Home Depot Building currently has a warehouse of some kind of their. Coming across, city council recently approved a rezoning for the Calabac property, which we believe was the right thing to do, the DDA board was supportive of that. It just takes one additional step down in the development process. This little building right here with the yellow dot on it is the Ruben property that the DDA sold, and which is currently being converted by the doctor. Across the street is a DMC facility. This particular, number 10, you have a copy of this in your packages as well. Number 10 is vacant property that's owned by the city. This is where the baseline monument will go, which the DDA has supported and efficiented city council. As you continue along Eight Mile, you have smaller buildings which have a mishmash of stores, some are vacant, some are occupied. But sitting at the corner, you have Guardian Arms and Guardian Health. That's their corporate headquarters. The one thing that Southfield has is the amount of corporate headquarters that you have in your city. Again, as we come back up the district, you still have some ancillary buildings back here. When we come back into this area right here, you have the old Bally's, Bally Fitness, which is currently being marketed by Mid-America. That particular property is on the market for approximately $350,000. There are no plans of demolishing the property. We had to find a suitable reuse for it. This is the Salvation Army. This is an office center that's approximately 85% occupied, dentist, schools, so forth and so on. So as you can see, the development along Eight Mile, we have some opportunities. We've had people look at us. We need to continue marketing that. As we come back up Northwestern Highway, as I mentioned, back through here is some residential properties which we do not take into account. This is the IBM Building. This is the building where the DDA is located. CFI, which is a company that came before the council for a tax evasion, it was approved. They've increased their employment there and increased their floor space. This is where the additional 100 Providence employees will come, and I believe that's going to happen sometime in April. This little gold piece, which is labeled 1B, is a vacant property next door. The building was formerly owned by Franklin Street Properties out of Boston. They sold this property apartment. Morgan is a Michigan real estate developer, which again, I think is a positive thing for us. We are in the process of marketing this. We've got some people that are interested in it. Right next door, we have Fox Two News. They have a large piece of property. They have a new general manager who's in Chicago. We've had the opportunity to speak to him directly. He seemed very enthusiastic and wants to contribute to the district and the city. Coming across the street, we have Office Space, which is owned by an entity out of New York. This is where Chairman Ralph is presently located at. They have put some money into the lobby area as well as improving the garage. Next door, we have a large 269,000 square foot building known as Northport Plaza. Nobody in the building. The building has, as an example, single-pane windows. Their HVAC needs an inordinate amount of work. It's owned by the Bank of Illinois, which is a single shareholder. It sits on 11 and 1/2 acres of property. That is a tremendous amount of property that we think there's value in redeveloping at some point. Bank of Illinois is in at my office, I'd say at least three to four times a year. Next door is the former Ramada Inn. We all know the situation there. My understanding is the RFP is due to go out shortly. They're pre-qualifying bidders right now, and hopefully we will have that facility demolished sometime in the summer or late fall. Once we do that, once we're able to show construction workers and bulldozers there, that brings light into our area. That's what people want to see. So we're hoping that we can get that down rather quickly. Moving along Nine Mile, within it, we have a number of residential condo apartments. Although, there are 10 different housing units in the district, 10. Some of them are better than others. As you move along Nine Mile, you know, you have, for example, the Garden View, Providence Place. Those are residential opportunities that probably need a lot of love. As you come up Providence Drive, you have Solair, which is a very nice development. They're in the process of finishing off the top two levels. You have Coach Light. You have a number of the Providence Place, Providence Park. There's a lot of opportunities here. For example, doctors that work at Providence that are residents that are looking for an area to live. This is the Village Office Center. This particular building is owned by Standard Mortgage. It was on the market for about $500,000. The city and the DDA recently met with a developer who's interested in demolishing that and making that a mixed retail use. We are setting up meetings with Doctor Wyman of Providence and the particular developer to see if there's any specific need that Providence may have for this particular site. We have a lot of energy going on along Nine Mile, which is where we have been focusing our attention. Our thinking is that if we're successful along Nine Mile, that energy will push out going down to Eight Mile. As you are aware, Nine Mile is scheduled for improvement this year. Part of that includes new ancillary improvements. We've been looking at some new paving. We're looking at potentially some new overhead walks. This is one priority that the DDA is focused on, where we like to really look at our resources and see what we can apply. Another priority that we're interested in is developing a property acquisition plan. As I mentioned, 85% of the property is owned by developers out of Michigan. If there is an opportunity for the DDA to acquire a piece of property, we want to be able to be in a position to do so. So as an example, this piece right here, former Montgomery Ward Lake. If that came into the market for, say, an attractive price, that's something that we may want to take control of. Moving back up just a little bit of our name, this is the entire Providence campus. $42 million capital expenditure there. Coming along JL Hudson Drive, you have the Millennium Theater, and you have the old Plaza Hotel. The latest on the Plaza Hotel is we The latest on the Plaza Hotel is we have a developer who is interested in converting that into Marriott. The difference at this point in time is he's willing to work out the payment structure on what's owed on the property with both the county and the city. Before he came, all the developers that came before us were looking for some kind of an abatement. So we believe that this particular developer has a little bit of weight and some substance to what he's trying to do. At the moment, there's conversations going on between Oakland County and himself to try and work out a meanable payment plan. We talked about the half building. We talked about CSL Plasma. This particular building, and this building, the J C Penney Building, are owned by Nassimi out of New York. If you look at the entire Northland proper, there are four owners in that land. You have Northland, which basically covers this. You have Macy's, which has five-hundred-thousand square feet. They use two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. And while they don't carry the inventory that maybe the Somerset store does, they've indicated that they're a little bit profitable there. They've indicated that they're not looking to move. We've had some very high-level discussions with regional vice presidents on New York. We also have, in this proper, Nassimi, which I just mentioned, and Targets. Along here, we have the bus stop. And as I have informed council with the bus stop, there are two, there's a short-term and a long-term strategy to that. We've had discussions with D Dot Smart, Police Department, and ourselves in the city regarding those strategies. The short-term strategy, quite frankly, is that Smart has agreed to replace all of the shelters with the approval of Southfield Police Department in terms of how we're going to spread them out. So we're going to spread them out a little bit wider, and be a little bit smaller, but shortly you should see new shelters there. The long-term strategy is, is that we are pursuing a grant that I believe was approved ten years ago, Terry, by Eight Mile Boulevard. It was never funded. Through the efforts of Eight Mile Boulevard, we are close to having a few hundred thousand dollars attributed to that law, to that bus stop. The intent is, is that we add higher security, we would add perhaps an enclosed transit center of some kind, we add new landscaping, and I think we're very close. I know that Northland is working closely with D Dot on some of those issues. But at least on the short-term, you're going to find that you're going to add new bus, bus terminals there. And we move through this, and this particular piece of property, what makes it complicated is you have four different owners in there. And I think a lot of people don't realize that. I think a lot of people believe that this whole area is owned by Northland. As we continue, continue down, we've had some good successes along Northland Drive. We have the joint venture between D M C and Wayne State. And then come across, we've talked about this area here. The board that I just, I'll put up as an example of the non-transit or non-motorized plan that the D D A and the city center are going through. City Council approved this as well. So we are in the process of trying to identify where it makes sense for us to put perhaps another bus station. Given the potential growth of the college, does it make sense somewhere along Nine Mile? It also would serve as providence in their growth. So this process is almost complete. The other thing that's going to help us, I believe, is a recently approved overlay development district. Again, it's an opportunity for developers to come in, and we may use it on this particular development right here. This particular developer is very excited about the opportunity of a development district to be put in place because it cuts down on this time. And any developer that talks to you will tell you that time is money. So that is sort of an update of the D D A, where we're at. We do have our challenges moving forward. The biggest challenge is, which will come before council again, is how do we stabilize our tip fund? That's the money that allows us to do these projects. We have to find a way to do that. We're working with the administration. We're providing different scenarios to them. And once we complete that, and give the equal valuation value to the county, we will be able to come back and have a discussion with council. Mr. President?
We're impressed with you, council. Mr. Lamb?
Okay. In informing us of all these wonderful things that are being done by the downtown development, could you do the same thing if you moved your headquarters to the city proper, to the city buildings, where we have plenty of room? And how much rent do you pay in the, in your building now?
Six dollars a square foot. Give me the total. Approximately ten thousand dollars a year.
Now, we have space in our facility. Why, why don't you seek to talk with our administration and find out if you can do as good as you do with moving into our facility and saving ten thousand dollars versus to that?
I think our stakeholders will, will indicate that there's value in us being in the district. It gives us the hands-on approach. We currently constantly have people from our district coming in, and all that. Our Providence Homeowners Association is very happy with us. I think that's the major reason.
I think they would be just as happy coming into the city hall.
I'm sure they would, and I don't argue that. I just think that there's more value in us being placed where we're responsible.
We would put a new red carpet down for them.
I'm sorry.
We would put a new red carpet down for them. Just especially for the downtown development developers.
Well, I think, I think there, you know, again, that's our position, is that there's, there's value, high value, in beating the area that you represent.
I don't believe that. We're not too far away from everything that's happening in the downtown development.
Authority.
It's happening. Now, I have a personal thing to talk to you about. You are the director of the downtown development. Why in heaven's name do you put your picture on the stationery? Alex, your name, downtown developer? Why is your, one out of all our department has? Do you have your name?
Let me answer it by saying, first of all, I have no ambitions for anything else. The only reason that that picture's on the E U's letter is because when I walk around, I want people to ask me or to recognize me as the D D A's director. And that's, that's the only reason I have. I have no other answer other than that.
Well, I didn't see it all, and I would prefer you to take the picture off. The city company.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
We had a Filipino sign on Rotland, on a street sign. You took it down and never put it back. Why?
We took the sign down?
Yes.
What was the sign? On Rotland? I'm sorry, what was the sign?
Filipino street. It was an honorary sign that the Filipinos wanted, and we, and when Frank Brock was there and everybody, they had permission to put it, we put it there, and your, your administration took it down.
During my time, sir?
When they changed signs, and nobody seemed to care. Nobody noticed it? Nobody ever saw Filipino street there? A lot of people did, but you, but the administration and the downtown development didn't see it. You see, everybody's shaking their head. Well, then, put it back where it belongs. They had permission to put it up there, and the downtown developer that time put it up there.
We will certainly look into that. I don't, I don't have any history on that search, but if any of my board members do, I invite them to respond.
That might have happened before.
The city might have done it, but not us.
What? That probably happened before Talbot was here. I don't think it happened.
No, it didn't. No, no. I know.
The D D A did not take that down. That had have been done by the.
When you changed the sign to put up your cornerstone name, you took it down. I don't know, I'm not blaming you, but.
The D D A did not take it down. That, that has to be referred to the traffic department if they took it down. Something may have happened to the stop sign, like being knocked over.
It wasn't anything to do with stop signs. It was on a street sign.
I'm going to refer this to the city administrator. Okay, find out. Public Works puts up signs, sorry.
In the downtown development area.
When those, when those signs were put up, that was back when Johnson Hallberg was here. That was way before.
All right, another question. Did you know that Filipino sign was there? Did you know it was up there at any time?
I remember when you named it, okay, the street, so that's, yeah.
Did you ever notice that it disappeared?
No.
We will call on Mr. Lamb. Our budget this year, two hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred thousand.
I, my thought is, you save more than your ten thousand, and now when you move in there, you don't have to force your economy if you're doing it forward. You're getting free money, you're getting assistance money, you're buying a good place. And I think you could save a lot of money if you moved into our facility or another game. But you have rooms. And I think the developers would be happy to come to city hall to do the same thing that you're doing now. I think they'd be happier to come to city hall than going to, going to let you in. Think about it.
Thank you.
A request by the council, please think about it.
We'll certainly provide that. We'll have the board to weigh in on that as one of our means.
That's all I have to know.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ralph, do you want to?
We respond to the lease. We just signed a new lease, six dollars per foot, it's a great deal. I think a whole lot more than that.
I didn't hear.
We just, we just, did we just sign a lease?
Three years.
Three years. We just asked for years, but we can't break that lease right now, six dollars per foot.
No, it's too bad.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah. Question about the overlay district, let's kind of a little bit. We just test that as an option for zoning in the city, and we've been talking about it kind of in theory, and I was wondering if you could walk us through specifics in practice. What is your vision for using that, marketing it to developers? I know you mentioned that one of the vacant properties is a possible overlay. Do you see that elsewhere in the district? And how do you see you using that to attract developers?
Well, I believe that in general, the overlay development district is going to be beneficial too for the city. I mean, if you, if you look at development, what's key to them is, you know, you talk about tax incentive, you talk about tax payments, but more importantly is, how quick can I get through the city's process? Can I get through permitting? Can I get through site plan approval? Can I get through council approval? That timeframe is, is important to development. The particular case that I'm speaking about, he called us after, after Terry and I met with him, he called us, I think it was the day after the city council meeting, and said that the overlay development district get approved because that's important. So overall, I think that that particular strategy is something that is a positive attribute to the city of this district. Do we, do we think we can use it elsewhere? Absolutely. Once the Ramada Inn comes down, that's going to be another piece of property that the city will have under control, that I think will be an excellent place to use it.
And another thing that we just did was the rezoning of that property along Eight Mile at our last meeting, and I know this is kind of real fresh, but is there, what's the discussions of that moving forward?
You know, it is fresh. We are marketing it. As you know, that property was, I think condominiums and residential. You may have heard me say that I have ten-eleven housing stocks in the district. We certainly didn't need another one. But I think that general business is a great zoning opportunity for that.
They, when, where the Minards is, or they're talking about, they're looking at, there's something that kind of didn't fit there, but you might want to bring back into the D D A to look at that new property, that new.
Absolutely. We think that, you know, Minards hasn't said no to us, but they haven't said yes. We haven't talked to them in a little while. I think that this is just another excellent marketing tool that we can talk to any developer who's interested in the area, as well as the city.
Anyone else, thank council? Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, a couple of questions. We're looking at making Southfield a walkable place. We're building as much as we can with the finances that we have, make it walkable. And you have an area that is sort of tailor-made for walkable, a walkable area, that you may need some extra help down there, but. One of the things that you did have was the farmer's market, and for some reason, it wasn't as successful as it should have been, so it closed. Do you have any plans to bring the farmer's market back? And if you do, where do you anticipate it will be located? What can we do to help make it more successful? Because I think that's a coming thing. You know, it's, those cities that seem to generate a lot of excitement, either have a farmer's market where they do it just on a weekend, or they have it just during the growing season, but what are, what are your plans, if you have any, from it?
When, when the board made that decision to back away from the farmer's market, it was for several reasons. First of all, if you recognize a number of markets around Southfield. Southfield, there was Southfield Northwest Detroit, there was Lath Village, there was Royal Oak. There were a number of different markets. We actually tried a number of different strategies, not only moving it from the Millennium Center, but also in lots. Originally, we were seven to two. We went to something like three to seven. I think that the board at this point in time wants, wants, would like us to stabilize our finances because that was costing us money. And once we're able to, to have some redevelopment in the area and generate new tax base, I think the board will reconsider that. I'm not quite sure that, you know, we've closed the door entirely, but we have put it on hold. Now, before we made that decision to walk away from it, we were looking at, we were looking at the Montgomery Ward Bay. We were going to convert the north part of the building into the police department, and we were going to use the southern half for the farmer's market. The board authorized me to move forward with negotiations with the developer of the company. We could not come to an agreement on the price. And so those plans were, were dropped, unfortunately. I think it would have been an excellent development, especially for the police department. And then that's when we moved it on Greenfield Road. So I think, yes, we will consider it at the appropriate time, but at the moment, I believe the board has different priorities.
Yeah, I, I think that if you had been successful with location along Greenfield, that would have been a lot better because people just driving down Greenfield would have seen it. Where it was, it was sort of hidden. You, you had to know, it was almost like a destination point. You had to, you had to know it was there to, to get there. And I, I hope you consider when you get your feet on the ground, that I, I don't think you need to take on any, any more debt until you, until you get your feet on the ground. But I think that's one of the things that successful cities have, have had, that it's kind of like a, a drawing card for, for walkable cities.
Yes.
Second thing, and you sort of touched on that, and it's not really your concern, it's really our concern, and maybe I can refer to our city administrator on that, and that is, are there any? And maybe I can refer to our city administrator on that, and that is, are there any, any plans for the downtown police station?
I, I would think that that's an ongoing process. I know the police stations talk to different stakeholders about, um, new locations, uh, and those are still ongoing. So, uh, we understand, and I agree, that the location that they're in, uh, they need to move. We'd like to keep them in the district. And so the chief, chief of office has had some discussions with stakeholders, and hopefully we'll have an answer shortly.
I know there's been, uh, some sporadic, uh, concerns at the bus stop.
Yes.
The police station where it's at is pretty, has pretty good access to that, that area. But, uh, I wouldn't want to say it moved too far away, but, um, I just wondered if there was any plans and that you had talked with anyone about the police station. Uh, third question I have is, of the businesses that are in the area, I, do you have an idea how many belong to the Chamber? Because I think the, the more businesses that belong to the Chamber, the stronger the, the area can be, um.
I agree. I think that, you know, any, um, any partnerships that we can have with the Chamber will strengthen both of our organizations, as well as the city. However, I don't have a count, uh, at this point in terms of many of them are members.
Yeah, you, you might, as a suggestion, you might wanna talk to the executive director of the Chamber and see if you can work out a partnership with, uh, with the Chamber to, to strengthen the, the number of businesses that are in the area that belong to the Chamber.
Absolutely.
Uh, I think it's, it just makes Southfield a little bit stronger too. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Jordan? Yes, I have a few questions. Looking at your PowerPoint now, you indicated that there's been several tax appeals. I'm sorry. Several tax appeals.
Yes.
Which, which properties were those?
Um, there are many properties, Northland, North Park Plaza Building. Um, there are a number of properties that have won tax appeals.
And that's within the last year or the last?
Year, year and a half. There's still, there are quite a few outstanding.
When I look at your, um, your layout here, I guess I'm a little bit confused. When you said that the red means an available building, so that's a, a building for sale, or that's an available, that's a building occupied?
Uh, that's a building that's developed, that would be a, an opportunity for redevelopment.
An opportunity for redevelopment?
That's right.
So, the, I'm thinking of the one on Eight Mile, the old Home Depot.
Yes.
Even though there's currently a tenant there, that building is available for sale?
Sale.
As well as each of the ones that are listed in red?
That's right.
Now, going back to the Coscos, the potential possible Coscos or Menards, what area were we looking at again? Was that the old Home Depot?
Costco was, was interested in the old Home Depot site.
Okay.
Uh, and Menard was in that general area.
In the same area as well. My, my concern is, um, we've got some big challenges that are there, that you listed here. What, has there been any outreach to Oakland County, the business development team at Oakland County? Because I know one of their key points is the, the medical, developing that medical piece and the medical mainstreams and life sciences. So have we reached out to Oakland County to see if we can give some support for them to possibly bring back businesses in this area?
Absolutely. We're part of the medical mainstream group, which I believe is what you're referring to, right? Um, so yes, we participated in the medical intervention conference that they sponsored last year. Uh, we're currently talking to their business development, economic development people. I know that Fred, Shelley, and Terry have good relationships. I do too, going back to my days at the state of Michigan. Um, a lot of those people I've known for twenty, thirty years. So, uh, we have constant flow back and forth. They have recommended certain prospects to us that we followed up on, so it's a two-way conversation.
So, I know you said you attended a conference, it's a two-way conversation. You almost have to be in their face if that's one of their, uh, if that's one of their projects. I mean, are there onboarding discussions, are there monthly discussions, you know, once a year that you talk with them?
Here's, here's the thing with conferences, is that if you go to a conference once and forget about it, you're not gonna see any return on investment. You have to build the relationships over a period of time. The intervention was, was, it was their first year. Uh, so we plan on participating again. Uh, but in order to get maximum benefit, you have to be part of the process over the course of three or four years. That, that includes, as we talk about economic development committees, you know, one of the things that I think is prevalent is that if, if trade shows or, uh, meeting with international companies is, is a high priority, you have to understand that those are not gonna happen your first time out.
Absolutely.
Those are gonna happen over a period of time.
I, I definitely agree with that, but I, I guess I'm saying is that it's gonna take more. I guess what I'm hearing is that you've gone to a few conferences, but just really being in the face of those up in Oakland County that carry some weight and have some power, that can possibly use the businesses there.
I think we have a very proactive approach with Oakland.
How much money do you have in the bank? If your, if your revenues for this year is approximately two hundred thousand dollars, what's, what's the, what's the money in the bank? How much do you have?
I believe that, um, uh, projecting out to the end of the year, we'll have about seven hundred thousand dollars left at DDA. About the same amount in the term.
I, I do agree with my colleague counsel in land, because we're in different times, different environments, and dealing back, you know, something that we've, we've had to do here in the city. And I would like for your board to consider possibly bringing your offices here. Because to me, what it does, if you have a developer that's gonna come to the city, they're going to have to interface with our offices, uh, here on our campus, and they'll have to go to planning and meet with our people. To, to me, it just makes sense to have it here and making it easy for those that are looking to do business with the city itself. As opposed to, you know, paying an additional two thousand dollars a year, those, you know, small fees. It adds up over the years. And, you know, we just can't just buy them the dollars they're paying, and, and it's gonna come right back to your pocket as opposed to paying it out and we, we just have to pay for it.
While I agree that cost cutting is an appropriate measure, sometimes, the other side of that equation is revenue generation.
Absolutely.
And we need to be positive in revenue generation, other than just looking at costs. And I think the city administration has an excellent job of cost cutting.
Yes, we do do a good job in cost cutting, but we also, you know, just wanna make sure we're using the dollars wisely. We're doing it with a limited, um, particularly since we do have an office, you know, space available here. You mentioned, uh, in your handout on page six, that you've had some discussions with the stakeholders, probably in time, you know, have made. What's basically been the outcome or the consensus of those stakeholders? What have, what have they shared with you about their concerns?
Well, I, I think those discussions, first of all, led to half remaining in the district. Um, I mean, we, we represented ourselves as someone that was willing to help them, the seamless transition. I think that that went a long way in keeping them there. Uh, I think the fact that Macy has told us that they're gonna remain in Northland is a positive example. Um, we talked to Providence about strategies going forward. Uh, we talked about strategies that, you know, may ultimately lead to additional development. So, having talked to, to the stakeholders, you do two things. One, you find out if there are any issues that they have that may cause them to leave. But at the same time, you discuss and identify opportunities that they may have.
Are you interested that Northland has four owners? Has there been a meeting to bring all of the four property owners together at a table just to talk?
Well, I'll, I'm, Northland will certainly be followed afterwards, and I'll let them comment on that. But we have, uh, that is something that we try to do, although we haven't been very successful in getting the various property owners to sit down with us at one table.
I, I really think that needs to happen. Just, just to bring everybody to the table, and especially what we can do to preserve and, and bring that part of the community up. What's the price on the, um, thingy?
I'm sorry?
What's the cost to purchase the thingy? Do you know that at all?
Uh, you know, I'd say it's something like over a million dollars.
I think that's it for now, thank you.
Okay.
Any other counsel questions on that?
Uh, yeah, there's one. I wanted to share with, um, with the council. Um, having a seat at the table with the DDA and hearing the concerns, they are, here's a three-year lease that's just been initiated. There's a couple of things that are actually contributing to the success of the district as they're paying, they're occupying space in a building. Um, it's something that the board has looked at as a positive. In addition to that, um, the opportunity to bring their board together, to control the space, need is necessary to, awesome, to showcase, because they're in a prime location now with IBM, and they're right in the district. And it does send a positive message, because they will be looking out at, uh, the skyline of the council. And we're trying to market another part of the space. I just feel that it's a very positive to bring developers right into that area to market it. Because if not, they would have to drive longer and try to find a space, or just drive by a car and bring them back here to another part of the space. So there's some, the, the challenges that have been outlined in this district are very real. The revenue decline, as we know, as the city is, is, is a reality. Um, there, there has been some cost cuttings, um, they weren't discussed in detail. So it's not a, a board that has stepped back from, um, cutting costs. And this board has met and discussed those on a number of occasions, both every meeting, on how they can balance their budget and look at doing more or less. I wanted to talk about the farmer's market. The farmer's market, um, there was such a struggle to get, um, that market to be successful. Uh, there was a number of reasons, like you said, the visibility of it. Uh, there's actually a marketing firm hired to bring, to market, market it. And if you remember, there used to be in the Sun and other newspaper advertising it. And it became a financial burden that the board just could not realize. I too think that the city of South, because Lath Village has a fair nice home there, right in the middle of the city. I do think there's opportunity for us, but if the city, uh, wants to do this, I think we, I don't even think the city should have left then. I think there should be a concerted effort to bring someone here in nonprofit. That could help us sponsor, um, the farmer's market. Because I, I agree with you, it's, it's a sign of a vibrant, um, community. Um, I know that we have the Foodland, um, who has, um, a retail thing, and I don't know if that's, uh, you know, a nonprofit, but, I mean, the grocery store is not a nonprofit. But, uh, we do need to do that. Two other things I just wanted to highlight, the partnership between OCC and Providence has been, um, tremendous. Providence Hospital and I had some very direct and, um, concerning conversations about the district. I pushed back on Providence, that if you look at the, um, the Detroit Medical Center, they have taken on the responsibility of developing everything around them. They're creating a sense of place with their hospital. And where is Providence, the St. John, doing that? Uh, the area does not give you a sense of place of a hospital. I talked to them about, um, landscaping, I talked to them about, you know, developing a strip mall to service the, um, the residents. Providence pushed back on me, and there is a perception of crime. We actually had to have a nose-to-nose on crime stats, because people exaggerate and say, well, you know, there's crime all in the parking lot when people walk into it. It's, we had the police records and the data, and even the security of Providence. And while the upper echelon was saying there was a crime-ridden area, no documents supported that, no data. And so when we talk about that image piece, and so it, it was a good discussion, because at the end of the day, we both said we have more to do. Uh, the Nine Mile reconstruction of that road is very important to Providence. Um, you know that Providence now has the hospital in Novi. And I sit on that board, and I have been really pushing that we're not gonna have a sub-hospital and a newer, uh, hospital in Novi. So that's why you've had the investment in the private rooms, the investment in the cancer center. And now they're on board, um, with, uh, the developer that, um, is talking about buying that building. We wanted to meet with them, and what are your uses that you want? Um, so that we can start creating a sense of place around the hospital. Because usually hospitals, there is this ripple effect, and the DNC, midtown, the DNC signal handler kicked started, you know? And I said, I want that, I want the DDA to be, uh, uh, that catalyst. And so we go back to OCC and, and constant dialogue with the, with the chancellor, with, um, um, the deans, and, and, and how can we take the investment they have made? I mean, the investment they made in their Southfield campus has been greater than any other campus. It's the fastest one. And you talk, you talk about the, the population that's coming in there. How can we keep them so they just don't park and leave? We have, we don't, and if we can take OCC and Providence and start creating a sense of place, a coffee shop, the walking, it's so important. Walking communities. And Don isn't here, but Don had always talked about the DDA like they do in White State areas. We have those lights, the security phones, to create this sense of safety. We have a police station there. Um, you know, one of the challenges we have is that bus stop. And I'm telling you, that bus stop, we've gotta do something with it, because it is a place, or for whatever reason. And the police chief and I have had this conversation. It's a gathering point of people thinking that they can do things illegally, because no one's watching. We need to have surveillance cameras there, we need to upgrade that area so it doesn't look, because if you, I would, I would invite any councilman to just drive and park your car, and just sit there and look at that bus stop. I would invite you to do it. And you need to see, because one of the things I'm glad we have in this meeting, it concerns me when we talk about them and those, because everybody at this table, we're working on the same, the same initiative. This is our city. And if we don't, you know, we cannot afford to say those people and those people. We're all working for the same thing, and the DDA is a part of our city. It's the interest to our city. And all that development that he's talking about, we've gotta get a sense of embracing this so that we can start creating, when you cross Eight Mile, you are in Southfield. And I don't, I'm not saying you're anyplace else, but I want when you cross the street, you have to enter Southfield. And something he didn't talk about is that by overpass. I don't know how many of you have called on that. I mean, you have people who are bringing mattresses and, and other things, and trying to create a city under that overpass. And I call and complain about that all the time, and, and we get people to respond to that. And, and because if you allow it, it'll keep going. And so it's, 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 I know, I know both groups, and I said it both times, and each of these groups are very passionate about it. But we've gotta get together, and the DDA to me is, while we talk about the city center, that is a wonderful opportunity. It is an opportunity that's going to really create, um, the, the excitement of our Southfield. But we need just as much energy and investment in the DDA so that we can continue to have a whole city that's thriving. And that housing issue, we've talked about that. And, um, while the challenge of this district, it's clearly economic development. The, the housing part of that, we have to stay on top of that, because it is saturated with multi-families. And we have to have a standard in Southfield that any family building that's in the city of Southfield, that we can feel strong as elected officials, as appointed, appointed, uh, board members, that if you come into the city of Southfield, you can expect a certain type of housing in the city of Southfield. We will not tolerate anything less.
I'm, um, gonna stop here. I just wanted to get the DDA members the, um, opportunity to say anything that they would like to share. But, um, Al has advised me that we have some folks here, uh, from, uh, Northland Center, uh, who I believe have a plane to catch later tonight. So, um, I would like to, uh, the meeting's not over, and we, we clearly saw this as, uh, two parts- So I would like to, the meeting's not over, and we clearly saw this as two-parter, DDA and Northland as separate. But I think, looking at the time, at 6:30, that we ought to move to discuss Northland, get an update, and I know there's several people here who will speak to that, so I'll, Mr. Davis, I'll let you do the introduction.
Before I do the introduction, I'd just like to thank my coworker, Jeff, for all her hard work in organizing and feeding the materials together, so thank you. This evening, we have two, Joe, okay. Joe Press, the asset manager from Ashkenazi, who will be discussing Northland, as well as Brent Greets, who is available from Jones Land Vasal as the property manager, so please welcome.
Would you be so kind as to give your name and business address to the rest of the company?
Sure. It's Joe Press, and the business address is 150 East 58th Street, that's New York, New York, 10155, 39th floor.
Thank you.
I'm with Ashkenazi Acquisition, asset manager responsible for Northland Center. I'm responsible for all of our company's large assets. Thank Al for being a counter today. Don't have, we have a little presentation to, that will outline the mall. Now, unfortunately, there isn't that much progress to relate everyone, which I know everyone's hoping there is, but as everyone probably realizes, there's a lot of struggles in Northland Center, besides that retail market is tough to deal with, the center itself is an aging center. And while people can't necessarily see it, a lot of money has been invested in the center, but unfortunately, still been in infrastructure. Since we bought it, we've had mechanical issues, electric issues, there's been just hundreds of thousands of dollars going into that, so it's a shame that has to go into that and not getting retail benefit. We are, the biggest bill we're working on right now is to try to get some anchor space and fill, so we can get some inline space to fill. We have a deal out now with Shoppers World, which we're trying to make work. We have them, we also own the Eastland Center in Harper Woods, we put them in there about two years ago. So we're working on a deal, the deal doesn't work well on the economic side, but Brent's pricing it out, and hopefully we can, we can make that one work. There has, there have been conversations on and off with Walmart, you know, that was a little while ago, and they know their other locations fell through. I don't know what everyone's feeling is in Walmart, if we think it's the great for Southfield, but the economics on that would be extremely tough. Walmart likes to own their own land, they need to have their perfect box, so we probably have to take down parts of the mall, and it would probably be pretty tough. If we haven't gotten a detailed conversation with them, yeah, but it would be, I can't imagine it'll work economically, but we're going to obviously try to work it out with them. I mean, aside from that, there's not, I mean, we have plans to spruce it up, we have designs for the entrances and some other things, but, you know, it all has to make sense at the end of the day to make the investment. I said, it's not, it's not that it's a profit center for us, and we're just squeezing the money out, the money's, like I said, going into the infrastructure, and it's just, it's just a tough property. If anyone has any specific questions about it, or if you're more than happy.
I just have a few questions. When you look at Eastland, and how that was a declining mall, and it was almost going to be an icon, like you were saying, you see how you turned Eastland around, why couldn't that be duplicated for Northland?
Well, we have Eastland, we don't have that Northwest, or the anchor sale. We have enough property, we have Lowe's, we have Home Depot, we have, you know, we have Target makes exactly, we have a boat, but we also have Burlington, we have Sears, now Sears is closing. But the sales generated, by example, Northland's total sales, let's say, is in thirty million-dollar range, you know, maybe more forty, fifty between the entire center. Eastland is easily over two hundred and fifty million. So you just have a lot more traffic coming in.
So with those stores that you mentioned, the Lowe's, we have one in twelve, but the other store that you mentioned, could you possibly have them, you know, trip over to Northwest?
Possibly.
Okay, so we can leave?
We've spoken to all, just to give you a little background on our company, our company, we have fourteen million square feet, we have a value of about five billion, we have a lot of malls in the portfolio, and we do our leasing in-house, so we have all the, we have all the connections, we know all the people, but we, actually, we also just hired someone locally to help us, so there could be, you know, more of a focus on the ground. I don't know if anyone knows him, his name is Jeff Higgins from Indigo, he's a former townman, leasing agent.
All right. We're just glad to have you here, and I hope you, and I'm sure my other colleagues are going to weigh in, we really want Northland to thrive, and we really want to see just a fresh space there, we really want to see some good anchor stores there, and so we're just asking, can you just give it all that you've got, despite the economic conditions that we're in, despite the challenges? You know, I've just seen what you've done at Eastland, so.
That was the goal, really?
Do you hear our prayer here?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, one last question, what type of store is a Shoppers World? If I'm not familiar with it.
Shoppers World is a discount parking store. They have very, it's not like, you know, it doesn't have to look like the garbage look, it's a very nice layout, and you can go into Eastland and just see it's a very nice, we actually, it was funny, they're, they're based out of New York, they have a lot of their stores in New York. We actually have a mall in Indianapolis, we convinced them to go and do their first one out of New York, and they realized they could do business out of New York, so now they're, now they're expanding all over.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Here are our prayers.
Mr. Vance is next, then Miss Seymour.
Yeah. I'm going to tell you what I heard from some business people, that Northland is not, they don't care to bring in other people and other businesses there. Why? Is it a tax problem? What's the problem there?
Why wouldn't we want to bring people in?
Why the owner of Northland, which is an average state owner, correct?
Right.
Why aren't they interested in really renting Northland and promoting it?
Because they are. I mean, we don't, we don't make money by keeping space vacant.
I've been told differently, and I'm telling you what I've been told by business people.
You could, if you could explain to me how we can make money on a vacant property, I'm all ears.
Well, it's not, it shouldn't be vacant so long, and I can't tell you how to run your business. Maybe if I sat down and thought a little bit, I would tell you.
But I could tell you, that's not the case. We have bills to pay, and obviously, we don't do that if we leave our state up.
All right, Miss Seymour?
I didn't expect an answer.
I have such a long memory, going back to when I was a kid, and Northland was built. And for a lot of us who've lived a long time, it, you know, we have ties to that, and it's a memory of things that have changed, obviously. But I've heard from a member of people, and I don't, don't be offended by this, but people say, well, the people that own Northland now are some landlords, and they don't care. And that story's going around a lot. It is, it's a great spot, and I know it has problems, but it's just beyond my, I agree with Ms. Jordan, it's kind of beyond my understanding that. Beyond my understanding that something can't be done. I understand the challenges, I think I understand them quite well. I don't live far from there, so, you know, I'm familiar with the area, but I guess here I pray, we want something done with it, it's so important to that part of our humanity, and of course, it would benefit you if we could attract some of these other stores. We want to see it thriving, we want to see you making money, you know, this is, we don't gain anything by it being in bad shape. It is a drawdown for us, for that area, for the whole DDA area, so I think we would do anything we could to help, that within our power. But I have to join Ms. Jordan here, apparently, do something about Northland, you know.
I can assure you, we've spoken, and we're actively speaking to all the anchor centers.
Good, good, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I just have one last question. Is there anything that we can do here to assist you? What can we do on our part to make sure that, you know, we can turn around Northwest?
Well, obviously, they'll come to a Walmart deal, and they're, you know, will probably need help there, I'm sure there'll be, whenever these anchors come in, there'll be issues with, you know, the mall has no pylon sign, which every standard mall has, and I'm sure that'll be something they'll want, you know, they'll want from us. So I'm sure there'll be different variances and stuff that we will need, which will come to the city for.
All right, absolutely. Because that was one of the first ones that said, that's where Walmart needs to be, is right there.
It's just, Walmart, like I said, is very tough to ban there, it's a different class they want than that, or, you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss is next.
Yeah, I have a question about the, I guess, the percentage of, what's the percentage of national retail, of those anchor stores, but also national chains and locals and independents inside Northland? What's the, what's the breakdown, do you think? Do you know offhand?
No, unless you know it all, then.
I don't have an exact number, but at Northland, I would say our percentage of nationals is probably about thirty percent.
Is that, is that typical for a mall, or is that low?
Fifty percent, fifty percent would be where you'd want to be, fifty percent or more on a national, but we've had the nationals, but the nationals, as most people know, a lot of them have moved out, because their sales weren't there, because the market wasn't there. So when their lease came up, they took their option to not renew.
What's the lifespan of a local independent? You know, I know you say you're making the money, and that's probably satisfactory to you, but the problem for us as a city, which is a struggle, when, you know, an independent goes in and out, and in and out, there's no crowd that draws and keeps a retaining building crowded at Northland. So that's where, you know, you can make the profit, where we struggle to kind of attract people to keep going there. So what can we do to make either the locals and independents more successful? I mean, that's a ten-thousand-foot question, looking down, or what can we do to attract a more national chain that would build a crowd that would keep coming?
Well, it certainly, you know, the foot traffic helps all malls, the, just, you know, the perception is the main thing, is to stop and doubt the perception of it's, you know, a trash mall, or it's a mall, or it's a place you don't want to go, or, you know, oh, they're not leasing anybody. That's not true, because we're actively seeking, we're actively keeping it clean, actively, you know, seeking tenants as well as customers. The, to answer your question earlier with the, as we call them, the local or the mom-and-pop, I'll bet you, I don't think there's any other mall, certainly not in Michigan, that has more local or mom-and-pop entrepreneurs there. They're excellent, I mean, they were there before we came there, and they're still there. I mean, there's some there that have been there twenty years, you know, came in, tried their luck, and they're generating business. And they have that repeat business. If it wasn't for them, I don't know where we'd be. I mean, they just have, I mean, they have the same customers, they have repeat customers, they have the service, the service with the smile, or they have the, you know, the merchandise that's, you know, required or requested, so. And you have other ones that have lost their jobs, and they're, you know, there's entrepreneurs out there that are always looking to, you know, try something different, or, you know, if they're not sure they want to do, you know, go back to working, you know, at a, you know, for somebody else. That's what we're there for, we start businesses and hope that they strive into, you know, a higher-end entrepreneurship within the mall.
You know, I guess, the success of Northland goes beyond just a city, you know, in Metro Detroit that's, you know, crying for help. This is the oldest mall in America, and the turnaround of Northland has implications way beyond just the city of Southfield. And I think that, you know, there's a benefit on your end, to be able to say that you helped turn around and help the oldest mall in America thrive. So I hope that investment in Northland is priority number one, quite frankly. You know, it helps us, but this would be a classic American story, if you could just assist this city and be able to help continue to write the story of this mall.
Mr. Slight?
I'm a forty-eight-year resident of Eastfield, but in seventy-five.
You're speaking, microphone.
And I started, I started at Northland when I was sixteen years old, and it had all the name-brand companies. What do we have today? We have little moms and pops, and we have people that do nothing but attract to young children and cause trouble. And I don't pull these out of my hat of what's going on there. It's like, a senior like me, there's nothing anymore to go to Northland for. When I go buy clothes, I go to dress by. Dress by is the hot place to go, okay, stuff for everybody, not like their new one out in, you know, Novi, that is very, very fancy. But it's like an average store that a person can go in and buy clothes. But when people see all these kids hanging around in malls, and at the bus stop, and in and out of the stores, it's like, who wants to go there? Let's start thinking positive and upscale back to where it was. We don't have those, the stores that used to be in business, third generations didn't want to take them over, they went into other cities. But it was a fine, fine mall to go to, and now I can say, it's a pick. I don't shop, and I sit on the down, on the balcony. So that's what needs a little more upscale and positive.
Do you want to respond to that or not? On the other hand, now that I've retired, I do my shopping during the day, and I shop at Northland. It's clean, I've never had, I've shopped there since nineteen sixty-three, I've never had an incident there, or felt unsafe, and, but there are a lot of stores, I just don't recognize the names of, you know, quite honestly, but you're quite correct, Brett, some of them have been there an awful long time, so they must be doing something right. And that leads me to, obviously, this is a profitable mall, and I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to that.
Well, unfortunately, it's really not profitable, like I said, it's.
Well, you're not losing money, are you?
No, but the owners aren't making money. They don't take a fee, you know, for running it. We have Jones Land Vasal that doesn't, we don't have extra money to take our own fee. Like you were pointing out, it is the oldest mall in the country, and you have some of the original equipment in there. The central plant is all the way in the far side of the property, it's as inefficient a property as you can have to run, it costs us millions of dollars a year to run this property, way more than a lot of our other centers. So it's, we can't even charge, in a standard mall, you charge cam charges to your tenants, you pass the recommy, you charge us, we don't, for the bulk of our tenants, we don't do it here, it'll be more than their rent. So it's, like I said, it's a very tough, and being that it is an old property to take the vacant, National also liquidated space, where we toured national tenants, ceiling heights are too low, the columnists don't work, they're not in a natural grid, in some parts, they're too, they're too tight. Just to deliver the shell to one of the tenants, it was over a million dollars. So to leave that space up alone will probably cost us two, three million dollars. So, you know, it's easy to say, oh, go bring all the national tenants in, we have rolled the national tenants in, but when you're getting five dollars a square foot at that, or maybe even just percentage rent deals, and you have to invest a few million dollars to get it, it's not easy.
I'm, I was about to, you know, my, I was about to stop for a second. I, you know, I've mentioned to Brad, we're overparked in the city, and, I mean, this picture, it tells it all, with all that asphalt. I would love to see outlawed stores there, to generate more traffic, and it's in, you know, a prime location is that auto center on Greenfield, right? Gosh, if you could get a hold of that, and, but there is space to the south of J.C. Penning. I don't, I don't know all your easements, and who.
I was just going to say, like you, it was pointed out before, there are four owners, so there's, while we own the parking lot, there are a lot of restrictions on what we could have.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you that, it would be good to press some out parts of there.
And the signage, we are, just so you know, we are in the process of redoing our signage rules. We've done a part of it, we've got more coming in April, and, I mean, we want you to be successful, and if signage is a hindrance to you getting tenants, then we need to know that, and work on something that would be appropriate through our, our building department, our city planner, and others, but at least hear it out, to know what your issue is, and if it's a detriment to getting leases signed, we need to hear that, I think, that would be very valuable information. Anyhow, I see some other hands here, I'll get them.
Hi.
As well as many people around the table, I grew up shopping at Northland. I worked at Northland at one point in time also, for Foxmore Casuals, which has been gone for a long, long time, so I'm dating myself. We've listened to a lot of comments on the outside about the mall. There is, whether we want to admit it or not, an unfavorable perception about the mall. And as you know very well, because you work with developers, you work with national chains in retail, perception is everything. My question to you is, and maybe you've already done this, but maybe you can start again. Sometimes when you look at some malls around the country, not just here in Michigan, but various different places, lifestyle malls and whatever, they were developed around themes. One thing that I can say about Northland that's wonderful is the Macy's depart, the furniture department store. It is phenomenal. It is the best Macy's, it was the best Hudson's department, I mean, for furniture, in the long run. Has there been any type of survey done to any of the customers that come in? What would they like to see? I mean, could we possibly build on what works, or what's positive, and maybe bring some, some people in? Because just as Brett was talking about the fact that you've got a lot of mom and pops that are successful there, you know why they've been successful all those years? Because back when I shopped, when I was younger, I was a teenager, and went to Northland, I could go to, to Hudson's to get what mom said I had to get, and I could go to Naydive, Naydive, or to K-Bomb, or some of the others. I mean, people around here have been around, no retailers are, you could go get funky stuff too. And those were the mom and pop stores that we kept in business. Plus, if you needed something special for church, you could go to Franklin Simon's, or whatever. That was why we came, because you had that mix. Is it possible, and I know it, it's, it's a huge task, but is it possible to look at what works there, and possibly build on that and bring some folks in? I mean, there's still Bed Bath & Beyond there. Isn't that something that everybody could use? Isn't that something that could draw people into the mall? And when they get there, maybe they go in Macy's, because maybe they've never been to that Macy's. And they say, wow, this isn't as bad as I thought. I mean, you have to get people there in order to kill that perception. And I'm just wondering, what is the marketing done to get them in the door?
The key is getting, again, some, some national tenants in, so you have something to start bragging about. But if you just said that about-
But in lieu of getting a national retailer, to me, everything is marketing. And like she, you know, she keeps saying that, I guess, I live across the street from Northland, and Otto's popcorn keeps me coming. So, and I have nothing against independent retailers, because that's what's going to drive our economy. We keep calling national, the trend is not national, that's just, it's pedestrian, it's usual. The thing that's popping up Midtown and Ferndale is the independent retail. That is what's going to happen. And if Northland can be the upfront person, the mall that brings in the independents, I have nothing against that. And I, you know, I'm glad that they have entrepreneurship on that level. That's the only thing that's going to save Detroit, that's the only thing that's going to save Southfield, particularly that mall. So my problem is, we don't have a marketing thing that says, come down to the DDA, what's special about it, what's special about Northland, what is peculiar about it? People do not chase that. The hipsters are not looking for the same. They need something hip, they need something cool, they need something different. Saying you're going to bring another department store, they're dying, because who wants another JCPenney's? That's why JCPenney's is not making money for that. So I guess my question to you, the council, we at the DDA, what is special about us, and what are we going to do about it, for bringing spec, young people? Young people are not going to come, it's just the same old same old. They grew up in that, and we're just going, and they're not interested in that, and that's what we need to start looking at. It's just that, Northland, I don't mind if they have local people, I think that's cool. That's why everybody's running down to Detroit and Midtown. It's cool. So that's basically that.
No, I, I hear, I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer to that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fraser is next.
Yeah, one question. What is the vacancy rate in the mall?
It's, it's roughly about, vacancy is about forty, almost forty-five percent, forty-two to forty-five percent.
So you're about half-hol?
Over half-hol. That's, that's not counting anchors, that's, you know, our inside stores. So we have the, we're kind of half and half there. We have the Macy's, and we have the Target, and then we have the vacant NWL, which was a former Montgomery Ward space, and then the vacant JCPenney's.
What would you expect in a mall that's, for the lack of a better term, I would call healthy, the vacancy?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I mean, ideally, you know, ninety percent. But, yeah, I mean, if you're, you know, if you have thirty percent vacancy, that's, you know, you're, you're working towards, you know, a comfortable avenue.
Okay. Listening to the, the request from around the table, and hearing the responses, I hear something different. What I hear is, every time someone says, but why don't we do this? You say, yeah, it'd be nice, but it's not possible. Well, what about this? Well, it's the oldest, it's the oldest equipment in, in the country, and it's, you know, costs us so much money to, it's disproportionate to the amount of rent that people pay. The column spacing is wrong, the ceilings aren't high enough. Please tell me what you think the future of that mall is.
Good question. Well, we, we do hope to make it work, and, I mean, and we're going to keep on working it. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you what the future's going to be, I don't know.
I think it's changed hands, you know, about every, every few years, and I don't know if it's, if you're one of the chain of, of owners that, that say, we'll buy this, and we'll make as much money as we possibly can, and we'll sell it to somebody else.
As a company, Ms. Ashman, the individual owns our company, doesn't sell real estate. I've been with him for eight years, and I've seen him sell one small asset.
Okay, then, you tell me, if you can, what you think you need to do to make this healthy mall?
We need to get, we need to get more anchor spaces, that's, that's what we need to do, and that's what we're working on.
Okay, now, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do you make it a, a place that people feel comfortable coming to, which will attract an anchor? Or do you bring the anchor in to show people that anchors are there, that I think you get the anchor in, so people come? And like, you know, you pointed out before, when you come to Northland, you'll see the safe place, and, you know, place it could be. Okay, and I'm sure that you've talked to anchors. What are they telling you? You say you've not been successful. What are they telling you that they don't want to move to, to the Northland mall?
Well, it, it depends on the anchor, whether it's Lomas who has, has spaces in the market, and Myers, which, they've just, they, they got another space, the Walmart, you know, space working out, Burlington, that they think about it, you know, they get back to it, they have other stores in the market. So it depends if they have other stores in the market, or perhaps they just, they just not interested in Northland. They just don't think they'll do the business there.
One, one last question then. A year or so ago, there was quite a stir that the security people in the mall were changed, or you either got rid of the security people, or you disarmed the security people. And that caused quite a bit of stir here, within, within our, our family. Can you tell me, what do you do for security at this point in time?
Sure. It actually was a year ago, we had purchased, which was in '07. Security was done in-house. When we purchased the property, we went to IPC. IPC is the largest private security force for malls in the country. They secure all our properties for us, including Union Station in Washington DC, Daniel Hall, a lot of high-profile properties for us. Beforehand, the security guards had arrest authority, which is just unheard of, that, you know, a private, you know, private company will, will have arrest authority. It's just not something we're able to undertake as a company. Liability wise, our insurance carrier wouldn't even allow us to do it. So, and again, we went to a third party, you know, to the expert, so it's not what we do, so we went somewhere else.
And what do they do?
They do security, that's all they do, they do malls.
Yes. But do they, I mean, you say they don't have arrest power, they do have-
They don't have arrest power.
So the whole, the whole, the whole thing that came up, people said response is, you know, the police are being called to the mall a lot more because, you know, because we got rid of it. They're being called to the mall more, because now when something happens, you need to call the police versus handling it ourselves. Which I don't see any problem with calling the police when you have an issue versus handling it yourself. But our, our crime is actually down, not up.
Okay. The order to follow here is Ms. Seymour, Mr. Lance, Mr. Ralph, and Ms. Jordan. So Ms. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to ask you, how long, you're representing the owners, is that correct?
Correct.
And how long has this current owner owned Northland?
I believe it was '07.
It was '08.
'08?
'08. And before that, the owner, do we know how long that, the previous owner owned it, somebody from DDA?
Two thousand, it's two thousand, so.
So it's turned over quite a bit. That's not a good sign. They don't have enough time to do anything. All right. One thing, I, I don't want to talk about Walmart, but I do want to mention about the JCPenneys, because we had heard that they didn't want to be there because they wanted to own their property. Is that true?
Who, Walmart?
Walmart.
That's, correct. I mean, in general, they like to own their own property.
Right. But that was the thing that we had been told, they didn't want to be there because they wanted to own, I mean, we were a lost story, but that one kind of resonated with me. Went before, when it was, now it's covered. And we've heard a lot of people saying, well, uncovering it makes it more, it makes it better. When they cover, you know, when they put the top on it, that changed everything, and now people are saying that the better way is not to have it covered, and you get more people, you have more, I don't know. I mean, that's supposed to be your field, but do you have a sense of that making a difference?
We've actually, we have discussed that internally, but I just don't think it would be economically feasible to even try to do that.
The safety issue, and, and I can only report this because we see the papers from time to time, that with most of the crime, and I'm not talking about people, you know, stealing, but the crime seems to happen in the parking lot.
Yes, I think primarily by the bus, by the bus stop.
I know there's a lot of activity there, I'm very familiar with that site, and it's certainly is something that just does not create a good impression, that's not your fault. But a lot of the outlaw, say, I would say north of that, on the other side of the mall, nearer to, let's see, what is it, Northland Drive or Jailhouse?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the northern one, not in, near the drive, but just the, the northern part of the parking lot. It comes up from time to time, people feel they don't, they don't feel safe there. I go, when I go there, I park in the lower level, close to the door, because I know my, you know, I know where to go. And I'm always felt safe there, but I, I think that, that, that perception is very real to people. I think that's pretty much it. I just, I, I don't, I don't understand why this mall can't be successful. We've seen bad management before. I'm not speaking about your organization. We had a time when the manager there was bringing in all these junky little stores, and that had, I think, a very negative effect on the mall, because a lot of people that used to shop there decided to go off to some and stuff, and so forth. So it is a challenge, but it's certainly worth saving, and I hope that, I hope you come up with something. Thank you.
And just on the cover of the parking lot, is we do have constant patrols around the parking lot, and it is a hundred acres though, so it's-
I know, it's large. And a lot of it is kind of remote, and people should know better, and they should be more cut right, that is true.
Mr. Lance?
Everyone is talking, and everyone is right in what they're saying, but they're not facing reality. Myron Fraser was close to it, Jonas was close to it. I'll tell it to you, safety. We need more safety there. Our police, our police chief came to us at the last meeting with a brochure and a pledge for safety. So I said, send these safety brochures out to all the people, you know, out all to, all the people carrying guns, and pledge them to safety. Then we'll have paradise, if it's impossible. But that's your problem. Not the vendors, not the companies, safety. Having security walk around the lot, that's not, that's not safety. You have to change the environment, and you can't do that. And Walmart wouldn't come to you for anything, because I spoke to them about this, Northland. And it's not the safety. It all goes back to safety. And if you don't do something, the owners of the mall, and come up with something, you're going to have it for years and years and years, and so will the city. And we can talk to, we'll blow the face about the vendors and all that. There's nothing more, nothing more than old vendors. It's perception of what Northland is. Change it, it could be changed. You have to find out how it could be changed. Mr. Ralph, to you.
Couple things. One, I don't think the crime statistics are that high. I think there's a question there, but not as bad as it really is. About the sign ordinance, I can appreciate the sign ordinance that you have in Southfield. If I come out of the force and come to Southfield, I'm relieved, my eyesight is better. So I appreciate that. Although, there could be some sweeping things done about the crime. The Northland is one of the only malls that does not have a rental, is that correct?
Yeah. It, well, it's a little tough, the way it's-
Yeah, it's like, I tried to leave Target one day, I don't know if that, now, there was reason for that, did there? That can cause problems for people getting from one place to the other.
And for control.
And for control, that's why I was going, so is there any thought of changing that?
I don't see how without some major, because the Macy's slopes downwards, so I don't do a major, major reconfiguration, you could, you could tell that.
And you talk about Macy's, and a lot of people go in the door downstairs, and I heard it several times, the four owners go there, and someone said that, well, my question is, what can we do? I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, the DDA often help, I can't speak with a council, what can we do to help some conversation between you and Macy's, and find out how you get Macy's customers to come into the mall, and if that conversation is over there?
Well, we, first of all, we've had, we, we have a great relationship, we have them a lot of locations, and, you know, we've, we've discussed this property. When, when you, when you talk about how everyone can help, I mean, we've spoken a lot about perception. I mean, in this room itself, there's been a lot of negative comments about the property. So, you know, we're all talking about that it's perception, and it's not true, but, I mean, if it's coming from the city, the negative perception, I mean, I, I mean, that, that's part of the problem also.
So we need to speak up and say, that it's not as, it's not as unsafe as it is?
When people say it's crime, it's not saying, oh, you know, Northland doesn't do what they need to do for security, it's saying that's not true.
Well, I think we all need to get a start. I don't know how many times, I, I like to ask one question, I hate to swear, but I'm spot, how many, when was the last time all these women opened? Ask me. Okay, so we are talking.
Well, there's only five people.
I got a Macy's, um- Yeah, that's the other issue, because they're not from New York.
Right.
I always walk around, because I want to check it out.
There is, these, these are very compelling numbers on the crime stats, down from almost a hundred in three years, from two sixty-three to one sixty-eight. And I'll bet you these, these would be not comparable, maybe even higher, to open mall or some other mall. Fairlane-
The more people, the more you should-
Exactly, exactly. All right, let's see, Ms. Jordan was next.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Is there any way that the parking around Northland could be redeveloped through some of the house, or the stores that you have on the perimeter of the parking lot? Has that ever been given?
Yes, it has. Along, along Greenfield Road, that would be a prime opportunity, but, like I pointed out before, there are four owners, there are different owners, and there are restrictions in terms of how it's developed.
Don't you have easements, and steam tunnels, and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, so that means you're going to go to those places. Lastly, looking at our-
And just, that's very, in terms of, you know, the individual owners, we've never all maybe sat in a room together, but we definitely, I mean, we know the scene very well, you know, Macy's, very well, and Target, we've all spoken, you know, separately.
Okay, so can we depend on you to possibly make that happen with the other owners?
Let's circle back and lead. Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, I can just interject there, I mean, I think for all of us, the big thing is the Penny's building. You know, we understand Target, we understand Macy's, and they're doing business. But for that Hulk to be sitting there for all these years, and, and we don't get it, because somebody's putting the bill there, they, they, I, I notice, I mean, they have been also actively trying to leave that space, like there's, I've been in-
trying to leave that space, like, there's, I've been in it, there's, the, the issue they have is, first of all, steps forward up to department store, that, that, you know, that's a big no-no. Second is the receiving, the receiving's in the lower level, and you, you sort of, you're on the back end of the property, so to get your merchandise, and no one needs the lower level, to get the merchandise to the freight elevator, that literally goes through the entire space. It's a very, it's a very tough space, to leave.
My last question, comment, looking at our, uh, demographics for that, for that area, the population, households, even the average income, could you possibly identify what stores would match the demographics that we have? Because to me, these are very great demographics, when you're thinking about retail. Um, can you sort of, and I'm not asking you to do it now, maybe it should come later, but, stores that would look for these sort of demographics?
Right, our leasing department does that for all the properties based on the demographics.
But can you send that back to both the DDA and the council? All right, thank you. And again, thanks for being here.
Mr. Lawson, and then, um.
Yeah, you know, I don't know if this is a question for you, I don't know if this is just a thought for both bodies sitting here, but, you know, we talk about, we're talking about marketing of Northland to get an anchor store in there, and that's, you know, that's kind of the overarching solving of the problem, maybe it'll bring in more independence, which is the largest growing sector of the economy, we need some sort of anchor. Um, you know, I wanted to bring back, I don't have, I don't have an answer to this, I don't think that I'm looking for an answer maybe, but it's almost as if we're missing a piece of marketing what's there to the audience that could go there, and where I'm going with this is that, you know, if you didn't know what was in Northland, you don't know what's in Northland. And it sounds like a very simplistic statement, but you wouldn't even know to go there. Uh, so I think the challenge maybe for you i- is, you know, what, is it the chicken or the egg? Are we going to bring people in, or are we going to bring an anchor because there are people in? We need to do a better job in general about talking about what's there to build upon what we want there. Um, and, you know, I think that's something that, you know, Ms. Jordan and Mr. Fercas and I are going to discuss with Al as we form this new committee, um, to focus on economic development, but I, I, I hope this is a, a good start, a good foundation about marketing, just in general, of, of, of our assets. Rather than, you know, being hopeful and wishful of what is to come, uh, talking about what we have. Um, so I don't know, you know, what, what's your marketing strategy, or is that something you guys don't delve into, you rely on, you know, the big anchors to market their own, or do you have a, do you have an investment in marketing Northland as an entity to people, to people to come and shop?
We happen to have a market, we have a, someone who works for us who does work at marketing at the property, um, tries to pull up events and stuff like that, but at the end of the day, first of all, you need something to brag about when you're going out in the market, right? Not just come back to Northland because you haven't been there, like, you know, you want to brag about something. Um, and you want to obviously save those dollars for when you have it. You know, when, when you have something to brag about, you can't always, you can't keep on throwing money, you know, just, and nothing, yeah.
Well, with that said, is it something that maybe the DDA and the city council can explore in terms of marketing? So maybe at a later date, we could have another meeting to.
How do you know? Northland is something, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and to get back with the marketing, that's something that
we try to do on a, I mean, we, we try to do events, we try to do sponsorships, we try to do, uh, you know, comebacks, uh, we're working with, uh, you know, we've worked with Providence, we've worked with, uh, APP, or we're about to work with APP, uh, with their, I'm knowing, uh, uh, events that they do for senior citizens or, you know, for walking, uh, you know, we've had the, you know, Northland has had the, the Mall Walkers, or they call them the Mall Milers, you know, for the last twenty-five years, and, and they're here, I mean, they're, you know, they're there every morning at eight o'clock and walking, they're a large group, they're very active in the city, so we like to work with them, we like them to work, and they work with, uh, St. John's, they work with, uh, different hospitals and the medical, uh, uh, community to provide information for the seniors or for the other walkers, so. Those are the things that we try to get the word out, try to let them know that when they do come there, it is a safe place, make sure you're telling somebody, so it's tour the mall, it's sponsorship, it's events, it's, uh, you know, advertisement, you know, we, we do as much as we can with the funds that we have.
Ms. Carter, you're next.
Yes, um, you mentioned that, uh, you have plans to spruce it up, and I was hoping that you can be a little more detailed in terms of what you mean by spicing it up. And in terms of dollars, uh, what is, uh, what your, your dollar investment will be in sprucing it up?
Well, when we talk about sprucing up, it's, uh, I don't know if everyone's familiar with Eastland, but it'd be pretty similar to what we did there, redoing the entrance, throwing a fresh coat of paint in the whole mall, redoing some lighting. Um, here, what we would need is marquee signs, you know, at least three or four of them, every, every large mall has it. Um, but, you know, a marquee sign runs, you know, each one is all over a hundred thousand dollars, you know, the entrance, you, you're talking about a million dollars, so, again, it all comes down to, you know, it's a business for us, right? It has, it has to make sense for us to invest the money, so we have plans, we've had plans for a while, they've been drawn up, you know, literally ready to go, but then, uh, you know, the, the underground wire is going, we have to spend two hundred thousand on that, and, uh, you know, we have something going for our chiller, so, you know, dollars keep on going elsewhere instead of there, unfortunately.
Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, you know, just going off of that, you know, you didn't buy this property just to sit on it, you know, just to have it be status quo, and I genuinely mean this, if you can come up with a laundry list of every, and this is homework for you to bring back to us, coming up with a laundry list as, as grand as you don't think that the city's going to help you out, or as small as, you know, a new signed ordinance amendment, to bring back to these boards, then we can start working together, but if, if we don't know your needs, then there's nothing that we can do. So if you can bring back a list of, from big to small, of everything that you need, uh, it's a starting point, and, and it gets things going.
Right. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Ralph.
Uh, I know you're going to have a conversation with Oak Park, Oak Park has a C-1 rail over there, I've heard rumors that things might start evolving over there, and I think that all this could look like it's a, um, looks a lot on, um. Nobody, I mean, look how, you know, so maybe you might talk about seeing Oak Park, out there, you know, if you're getting on your toes.
Mr. Lance.
No, I'm going to make you all laugh. The city of Southfield Council is sitting here, we should have Oak Park here, because they get a lot of the taxes from Northland, not Southfield. You should have invited North, uh, Oak Park here.
Good, if you're trying to invite.
Let them give you some of the answers for the taxes that they receive from Northland, not us.
I'm not hearing the laugh, but you can hear, yes, sir.
You know, you, you have heard that OCC put twenty-five million into educational facilities, you've also heard the Providence Hospital put forty-two million into the development of new medical facilities, neither entity did this without a strategic plan. In terms of strategic plans, I've never seen one that says, I can't do. I've only seen one that says, I can do. I would really like to know, since you all are in business to make money, what your strategic plan is for Northland, and how then can we assist?
Well, that was, you know, the comment that you made, and we'll, we'll, we'll put that together in terms of how you could do it.
Mayor?
Yeah, um, that's a very, very good answer, and I'd like to go. One of the things that I've heard is, is the purchase of Northland is that the infrastructure is very old, I, I do believe that it has its own boiler system and its sustain and stuff, right? Is there any way for the mall to become profitable by cutting off its own power source and connecting to outside power source, abandoning the maintenance of all the boilers and all that, uh, the electrical, steam and all that, and just really cut that off and connect to public utilities? Can you do that?
It's, it's, well, I mean, Brent shaking the head, it's doable, but he's shaking the head, because when we looked at it, it was, I think, in the five to ten million dollar range or some, you know, really high number.
But it, and that goes back to a strategic plan, if you invested in that, the amount of money, you're saying you're putting two and three million dollars a year just in that infrastructure and trying to bring that up to date, I, I think that's the long-term look, if it's a, if it's an upfront investment, it's going to save you money if you do plan on keeping the property, and that would, that would allow you to have some cash on hand, and there is funding now for companies in Southfield are funding, but loans, low-interest loans, if you're going to invest into energy, um, improvements in your property, and that's one of those partnerships that we can give you, called a pay program, but, you know, it's, we don't want, and I'm not saying that you are, we don't want you to just throw your hands up and say, this is it, and this is what it is. I have been to Eastland as well, and Eastland has more of a retail mix than Northland does, it really does, it has more national. Eastland is probably about the same age, and there's some challenges there, I don't think it has that power plant situation, but.
It, it does, but it's connected to the property, so it's a little more efficient, but it's also inefficient.
Okay. So it, it goes back to that strategic plan, and if this is a long-term investment for the company, you're hearing from all the elected officials here, and the body that's responsible for the DDA, that we want that mall to become more relevant, we want it to become more inclusive, and, you know, there was a time, previous owner said, we've created an urban mall, and I don't know what that meant, I don't know what is an urban mall. However, I don't wear jeans on a regular basis, there's, I, you know, I have to dress in fabric that's going to last longer than two days. So I, I have, I, the best, and the, and my cash, um, my income ability allows me to buy higher-end, longer-lasting, more sophisticated clothing. And the reason why I told you I just go into Macy's is because I have repeatedly walked that mall, and for me to find, uh, clothing and shoes that would fit my lifestyle, and I'm a baby boy, and so there's a bunch of us in this city who look at the demographics. And then the other, you know, there's other things, we have three golf courses, a private golf course, two public, and there is nothing in the mall for me to go buy a golf supply, and you have all kinds of sports and schools. I mean, so there, getting back to the question, have you surveyed, what do we need here in this city? And, and you, when I looked at the demographics that you're marketing, you're marketing all the way out to fifteen mile, how many of those people are actually coming to your mall? And if for them to come to the mall, if we're going to turn this around with the strategic plan, what would you need in that mall for them to come? Because right now, I bet you're half of your, your demographic circle, I bet you're not even touching them. And so, you know, there, there is an opportunity, you know, when you say that matchwork will want to make money, well, I think that you're missing a lot of money because we need that strategic plan, and I would love to just run up the street and go to Northland. You know, I always use the thing, there's not a Victoria's Secret at, at Northland, there's not a Bed, Bath &amp; Beyond, you know, if I want to buy linen, you know, we used to have Annie's linen, it left. I have one choice, and that's Macy's, and that's usually where I go if I want to buy linen. Um, so there are opportunities, I, I, I don't know any other mall, do you have a tattoo store in your Eastland mall?
Um, Brent, do know if that's right.
Yeah, how many malls do you have a tattoo store in? I mean, that, that just kind of threw me, that you can go into the mall and get a tattoo, but I, I know they're paying rent, but I, I just think, you know, we could be a partner in making money in that subject, but we want you to be a partner in being part of a, a, a destination point for the people to pay taxes and live in it. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else?
You know, is there any way that we can have a follow-up meeting, just to see, you know, with the comments that we've made, because we just don't want you to go away and not really hear anything.
Okay, we're going to go back to your.
Uh, you know, six months, a year, or just within a year, that you can come back and we can have another discussion, just to see if we've made, you know.
You should do it locally, yeah.
Okay, so we just want to. Did you take your card?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I mean, just to finish, it's not, I know there's some comments about we don't care about the mall, and somehow we're making money by leaving vacant and all that stuff, I mean, that, that's not the case, so what we do is, we, we, we buy properties and we turn them around, that's what we do really well at. Ms. Ashkenazi buys properties, he buys it with his own money, so he doesn't have to sell them specifically for that reason. Um, he holds it, he always says he's buying for his grandchildren, so whatever he buys, he plans and owns it together, you know, forever, and for him to be able to not turn around the property is often not what he wants, you know, he wants out there, so it's not that we're not committed, it's just, it has to make economic sense at the end of the day, and we have to be able to make it work, and I'm, I'm happy here, everyone wants to work with us, and hopefully we can do it.
All right, Ms. Lido.
I've got a question. How many stores in what cities do you have?
Uh, we have, we have thousands of tenants across the United States and Canada.
Really, in Washington, DC?
Yes.
Or Chicago?
Yes.
What stores do you own there?
Again, there's, there's hundreds, hundreds in the city.
Or you're by different regions?
We, 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 I said, we, we have fourteen million store feet in, in the company.
Mr. Carr, should you, um, have a question?
What's that?
Any question?
We have thousands of, we have thousands of stores throughout the country.
Okay, is that malls or stores?
Malls, stores, strip centers.
Well, I think that's kind of like to hear some of what are these, what are your feelings, that's helpful.
And if you have, if you have the, uh, Washington, what's the train station?
The Washington Station, Washington.
Hey, that's, that's, that's happened.
Have you been there recently?
Oh, yeah.
So you can see, we've, uh, we've completely turned out around.
So you're the people that have that mall in Washington?
Hey, make that happen at Northland.
I know, that'll fall in, fall in, I know you love.
Well, maybe we need to obviously like lower answering.
Uh, let's give me the last, uh, question.
First of all, I mean, just for, you know, so I'll, I'll hand out my business card that has our webpage on it, you can go and you can see our portfolio on there also.
You, you mentioned bringing some anchors there, what type of financial incentives are you trying to offer in order to lure the name?
It depends on the anchor and, you know, their financial, where we're told, but we've, we've even gone to an anchor state, um, I, I can't ask, I can't name the names, but we, we've offered them the state some percent rental only, you know, we, we thought they would do well after we're done with what we need to do with the mall, so we said, we'll, we'll, we'll build up for your stacks, we'll give you, you know, percent rental deal only. But again, they want, then they want kick-out rights if they're not doing business, so it's like, you know, you can have it both ways.
All right, um, this has been a very good exchange, we really appreciate your being here, um, uh, and, and your candor, but I think on our side, you can see that, um, we're very supportive of this property, we want it to be a go, um, and we're willing to be part of the solution. Great. Um, I know you have a plane to catch back to New York, so we'll excuse you if you need to leave, we'll understand. Um, at this point, uh, Chairman Ralph, I don't know if any of your members had anything else they'd like to add, um, comments back to our earlier, uh, session on just the operations of the DDA.
I want to first thank you for allowing me to come to you after you had this talk. I think we went along with it.
Um, I have one last question to perhaps the director or any of the board members. Um, uh, when Al showed me the figures, uh, the revenue figures, um, honestly, I've been physically, um, out of, uh, how much the situation has turned out, it's, um, obviously, I know that there are tax appeals and devaluing the property and what the, you know, we live that every day, but, um, with the graph that he showed us in PowerPoint, I'm glad you have money in the bank, um, is there a strategy for how you're, you're going to go forward, given the, um, current fiscal crisis that you're in, that's what I would term it.
There is a strategy, as I mentioned, uh, council president, we're in discussions with the administration to make sure that everyone is aligned on the strategy, and once that, um, is settled, and part of the, the delay is that we're waiting for some equalization values from the county, which I believe will come out in the next month, and ultimately, we'll need to come back to council for your approval.
Yeah, but I, I don't, uh, I don't know, I, I guess it's almost like you have no money to operate on, unless you have a bank, so, um, other than just cutting any improvement project.
Well, you know, we're gonna focus our current resources on that mine, the infrastructure associated with that. But, the strategy that I spoke about will allow us to start generating cash flow again. And that cash flow will come in handy with future projects.
All right. Thank you. Council or DEA members, anybody need a last word?
Yeah.
Well, I will echo Chairman Ralph in saying that I really appreciate all of you coming. It's always good to connect faces with names and bodies, so to speak. So, we appreciate the time you spent with us this evening, and we'll hope to do this again. Thank you. We'll take a couple of minutes reset at this point, and then we have a council. Yeah. First, let's, Chairman Ralph, please do adjourn.
I have a motion for the hearing.
And city council is reset for five minutes.
How are you doing?
I do too.
Hey, let's grab dinner.
Yeah.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
All right. Any questions from the council?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I do. It seems like from time to time, we get requests and we've acted on all of them with a positive manner. The equipment that either comes from a grant or from the federal government or something, some of it goes to the fire department, some of it goes to the police department. Is there anything that the police and fire are going to coordinate the equipment so we aren't necessarily needing to... I know money is kinda tight. And I know this, in this particular situation, it's only voting, so money is not involved. It gives me an opportunity to talk about. Is there anything that the police and fire work together with so that they can share the equipment? Back to you, Ford.
Through the chair, that's a great question. Councilman Fraser and Fire Chief Rowley and I are working very closely and doing just that. We're working on some training, some combined training, police and fire. Also, our department's training with outside agencies and outside organizations as well. So, absolutely, it's something that's on the radar and it's especially with budgets being tight and resources doing well, we're absolutely looking into partnerships like that.
Okay. I know the fire department got some equipment that was stored up in Connie and I guess tough three years ago. It was some kind of trucks that used in emergencies. Who would you seem like you're on the right track?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Chief Rowley, you're gonna help us out here. By the way, while he's coming through the mic and through the chair, this item will be before council for consideration of approval on March eighteenth. And so, what you see here will be what will come before you on the eighteenth.
Good evening, Council President, council members, and Madam Mayor, she's still here. And the answer to that question is some of the resources that come in through federal grants come in through emergency management, and we're working with the emergency management director. And those type of funds can be coordinated both police and fire. If they come in through the grants, like Safer Grant, those are specific to fire personnel, AFG, Assistance to Firefighter Grants, those are specific. So, police have specific grants, fire have specific grants. But there are grants through emergency management that can coordinate resources. And we can coordinate, we're doing some coordination on training of our personnel also. Okay. If that helps. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I have some other questions. One of the things that I think was really neat and I hope it's still going on is I'm in the world of fire, just for County Ground, and Southfield Police, Tony Rocha, who was the executive director, told me that the Southfield Police for the past number of years have entered the crisis lane up at County Ground and had some training on how to deal with people that are in extreme stress situations. It's been, has been very helpful to the Southfield Police Department when you get into a situation here and you have a person that's stressful, you know, that maybe has hold himself up in a house and doesn't wanna come out. You can, you have the skills to talk them through that and maybe make a resolution to the situation that is less than a storm in the, you know, storm in the house and kicking down the door and all that. And I think that's really neat. And now, there's another one, and I don't know if you've heard about that or not, but it's mental health first aid, which is a training. And again, County Ground sponsors that training for people to, and anybody can take it, just doesn't have to be the police. I can take it and anyone else can take it, to help recognize the signals of someone that's having some mental crisis problems and maybe helping them through those, not in a psychology way or anything, but helping them maybe find some assistance to make their life better. And I don't know if the police department would be interested in that or not, because, but what I read in this letter is it sounds more like training that's a reaction to a situation. The mental health first aid would be more like a preventative kind of thing, something that would help the people before they get into a crisis situation that you'd have to take it or be happy acting.
Oh, that might be something that you'd wanna take a look at.
A question to our city administrators. When they, I know they've been parting this vote to try to become a voting member. Will this help on our dashboard report that...
Absolutely.
Okay.
It'll be on there.
All right.
Because we did all help we can get into that dashboard report.
Yes.
I know we're getting all the money this year.
We even though we first started thinking about this, it was at the, at our council president's meeting and actually at our agenda staff meeting, what it was brought to us for consideration to ask to be on the agenda. So, sometimes that's a normal question they ask in the state level. A lot of them wanna know what you first thought about. I thought they had concepts. So, we're on the case on this one.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
There are no other comments, then we'll advance this to the regular meeting of March eighteen. I assume we'll be on the consent agenda. All right. Next, we go on to requests for upgrades in the police department building. You have?
Thank you, sir. I come before you with a request for upgrades in the police department building. A building upgrade work group was convened. The work group conducted an extensive review of building operations. The work group reviewed how to create efficiencies within the police department while providing the highest level of service to the public. As a result of the building work group findings, there were several recommended modifications to enhance operational effectiveness. The existing pro desk is not handicap accessible. In addition, those needing to conduct business with the records department have to go to the second floor, often causing confusion for the public. As part of the building upgrades, the records department will be moved to the first floor and the front desk will be modified to become handicap accessible. The total cost of building security upgrades are $224,738. Additional details are available in Exhibit A of the council resolution. This project will make our building more customer service oriented, be efficient to the public and employees, with the ancillary benefit of safety. Funding is available through insurance risk retention fund balance.
Mr. Ralph?
Yes. How long do you anticipate the whole process going forward when we give approval? How long do you think the construction or improvements will take place? And then also, will there be disruption in accessibility to the building when the project is launched forward?
Okay. I'll answer this question in order. From the point, do you give us authorization? We're anticipating 120 days before we can have the entire project completed. And then the second answer to your question is we are in the process right now of planning, making arrangements for when people come into the building, where we're gonna be there and take care of them. And it'll be in our building, most likely on the second floor. So, we'll escort and rent it to the second floor. But like I said, we're still in playing stages right now, and that could change.
I would think it.
On this journey.
Two questions. One part, the fire department or non-fire?
Correct. Yes. The fire department, crime prevention, I'm sorry, safety, safety prevention actually, chief, fire protection, I'm sorry, is in the police building now on the main floor. And they're gonna be moving to one of the police or fire headquarters. And their records department is gonna be moving inside of that location where they resided.
My other question has to do with the bidding process of Mr. Scherr. And how is that going to work out this time?
We will be bidding this through the Southfield Building Authority. And we would ask at this end, the building authority, and they use the purchasing procedures exactly as we do on many of the vulnerable bits through the council. Once council turns the project over to the building authority, they conduct the...
Okay. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Again, a significant change here is that people will not be able to wander to the police building once the renovation is done, confined into the lobby. And we will move this to the March eighteenth agenda, seeing agreement.
Question. Everything they go to the second floor or no, will be on the first floor?
Yeah.
Except, with the exception of the chiefs of police officers, you would be escorted up there or the detective bureau, and same thing, you would be escorted up there also by one of the detectives.
Now, right now, you can walk up to the records.
Oh, you go up on the escort.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I want to bring it to the attention of the council. I believe that this project that we have proposed before us is needed. It is one that we are looking at some of the safety concerns and the risks within the police building. But I want to say, I am intrigued and brought to this thought, the need for security in the administrative building. When you talk about people wandering around a building in City Hall, you can go to any part of the building without an escort. And we have been confronted with individuals who we had to call the police for. There is a real need for us to, there's a real need for us to have a security survey of our administrative building. We talk about handicap accessibility. Our front door to City Hall is not handicap accessible. The, if you go to any city hall, there is a desk that refrains people from wandering throughout the building, and then they're escorted or met at that desk. We don't have this. And we, I continuously bring this up. And I can tell you, if there is an emergency or if there's some type of threat made or physical attack on any city employee, we will then react and we will find the money to do it. I'm asking this body to plan to do a security. We don't have cameras. You know that we've caught people in the building after hours doing things that they shouldn't be doing. We don't have cameras, even for fire safety. We do not have a fire alarm in the administrative building. We had a fire in the pavilion part of the building. We had to get on the phone and call the authorities. We did not know what was happening. Should we evacuate the building? We smelled smoke. And what I'm saying is I have repeatedly in different kind of venues brought this up. And I'm bringing this to council. And we need, this is a safety issue. This is a fire safety issue, and we need to have it on the table. How can we secure our building? It requires funding. And I know council president said this is something we can talk about in the strategic planning. I'm all for that. But I don't want this to continue to be pushed under the rug. And I will tell you, sitting in our office, I don't have a gun on my head. And as much as I support, we need to take care of our police department and make sure they're safe. I think that we should have some form of security plan for our administrative building. And I'm asking the council to agree to at least, not at minimum, discuss the, at the, what's the plan?
Visioning meeting.
Visioning meeting on what we wanna do about that. And I can't tell you how serious I am about this. And this isn't, I'm not gonna be your mayor forever. Whoever worked in this building, the clerk's office, the finance office, whatever, these are different times. And when you hear things happening, why did we end up having a police officer in our council meetings if we didn't feel that it was a new day? And we should have some form of response to challenges that we have. And when, I'm speaking personally because when someone gets upset, they go to the mayor's office. They don't go looking for the city administrator. They don't go looking for the city chairman. They say, "Where's the mayor's office?" They are the ones responsible for what's happening to me. And I want the council to take action, to give some kind of direction on getting a security survey, get a security plan for our administrative building. Thank you.
I think I would support your request, Mayor. And we're beginning a framework of budget. This would be a capital project. And I think you're correct. You start with a security survey. And as you know, I'm a big proponent of FOPs because they're programmable and they can be deep programmed. And then you don't need an escort. If you wanna conduct business, you have your FOP that's programmed. You can go through various doors where you're permitted or not permitted, you can't go. I promise you that we'll bring this up again.
Well, don't we need a consensus before we move forward on it?
Well, we were gonna bring it up at the visioning meeting and the budget thing. But, I mean, if you wanted...
I think we should hear what, you know, how everybody wants to weigh in on it.
Sure.
That's what we've been doing here. I would like to hear what my other colleagues have to say. I'm not saying it's not valid, but I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say before we just move forward with, you know, setting it.
Okay. Mr. Ralph?
Yeah, I think it's a valid request. You know, just thinking about last, must've been what, last fall, when the gentleman went into the police station. And, you know, just thinking that had that happened in City Hall, you know, what would have been the outcome? Because we don't have necessarily officers right on the spot to react as they did when they went to the police station. And it made me nervous. And it made, it started me thinking. I can understand, you know, the feeling that it's a balance. You know, you gotta be an open government. We gotta make sure that we're not, we're not a fortress. But we also have to live in the reality of the world that we live in. And I'd like to see a discussion take place. I don't think, you know, there's a quick answer tonight. I don't even know if there's a quick answer, you know, in this year's budget. All of a sudden, we have all the solutions. But I think it's something valid to discuss.
Ms. Timmer?
Yeah, I was, I've had felt for a long time the mission of cameras in the lobby. Yeah, I was, I've had felt for a long time the mission of cameras in the lobby, and I've mentioned that to staff. I think it certainly wouldn't hurt to have a study, whether, you know, whether we, I don't think we're prepared really to authorize that tonight, because I think there has to be some discussion, but I think at the very least, have cameras in the lobby with some sort of a panel of someone watching. To me, that would be a minimal.
I would add that in my former employment, we got a home man security grant for every school in Southfield, that the money came through the state police for security analysis. We won the grant, it was almost $40,000.
For analysis?
Yeah, and made a series of recommendations from people who do security.
Okay, so basically, it was a study.
It was an analysis to tell you what you needed, where you were vulnerable, and how you could remedy.
I think that's a good idea.
It directs how you're going to spend your money, really.
Well, I think we need to know where we are vulnerable. That would be worth finding out.
What's interesting is that other communities, I think, oh, Park is one, and I think Lansing's another, their district court is inside their municipal building, so it's kind of a catch-all security system, whereas we have separate entrances. That's why we have to think a little bit differently than other communities, because we don't have a security measure to say, you know, well, our court's in this building, so you can't ring in your phone, you have to go through a metal detector. We have an officer if the court is in front of the building. So, I don't know if we go that far, but we need to talk about it.
Yes, sir.
I think one of the worst things we can do is start solving the problem before we know it's a problem, yes. Therefore, I agree that we need to talk about it, figure out what it is that we need to do, and then do it in a way that doesn't wreck our budget, but do it the most important things first, and there we go, try to solve the problem.
All right. So, does that help us, George?
Absolutely. I just wanted to hear what others have to say, as to the need, because what I don't like, I need to go to the city county building in Detroit, and just to, you know, leave your, go through the security check, take off your clothes, you know, it's a hassle. And then when I go up to open county, I have, you know, I have my phone in my purse, so I had to go back to my car, lose my phone. I mean, it's a hassle to do business, so I just want to make sure it's not going to be looking like a fortress or an inconvenience for those that are trying to come in and do business.
Well, you know, just speaking for myself, I would agree with you. Some of that seems extreme to me, but on the other hand, we have this just open campus, and I, you know, my background, the biggest problem always is intruders, people who don't belong. People that belong are fine. So anyhow, Mayor, we'll have more discussion on this. Is work done?
Does it include fires?
Yeah, sure. I'm surprised to learn there isn't a fire alarm in the building. I don't know building.
If there is a fire, then you have an airhouse system, there is something that tells you that it's not.
The chief would like.
Yeah, there is a fire alarm in the building, it's just not where it should be.
Not working. I can provide that to Mr. Scherritt, so we can include that in the.
The aircon now works, but it's absolutely active for many years on that one.
Absolutely.
It does work now.
Yeah, and that, the fire that occurred.
During the Gem Charlotte, one of the, there are announcements during various pavilion activities, so we know it works.
All right, we're going to move on then to, Lieutenant, we'll see you on the 18th.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay. We're going to move on to Mr. Block, or Ted.
I'll start, and we have a team of experts here. This is a rule ten, so we have better have it together here, guys. This is authorization to shop, this is licit bid, and it has to do with the swimming pool and the marbleized finish. And with that, I'll turn it over to the experts. Mr. Davis can take this one.
I guess so. Okay. We are looking to, maybe we'll stay there. Maybe.
That's too just.
That's too just. We're actually looking for authorization and licit bids to re-marsite our pool. Marsiting is a plaster and cement mix. It's the covering that goes over the shell of the pool, it basically keeps you from cutting your feet. If not, if that wasn't there, if that wasn't there, there'd just be a gunite finish, and it would be very rough on your feet. Most outdoor pools have marsite, some are tile. Ours is a marsite pool. Usually, it lasts about 10 years. We got a little more than 12 out of it. We thought, when we opened up last season, we were looking at it, we thought, we probably are going to need to redo this sometime soon. At the end of the year, during closing, we noticed that it was much worse, and we knew we needed to go ahead and go for every marsiting type pool this year. Any questions?
Again, the bidding process, how is it going to be handled?
We're going through purchasing. We'll be selecting the most qualified, lowest bidder, hopefully. We don't have any predetermined companies that are going to bid on this, so.
And how soon will the work begin, should you get approval?
We'd like to begin soon. The work will take anywhere from three to five weeks, so we want this done by the end of May at the latest. So we're ready to fill the pool, kind of work out the kinks with the filter, it's always a curve a year, and we're ready to go on June 15th for opening.
And the new life expectancy of the material is better, or we're still looking at 10 years?
We're still looking at about 10 years, so I would think, again, we'll be able to get 12 years out of a new finish.
Mr. Fraser, would you do a rule ten?
I have a question to ask first. You just tried to get back at me, getting your attention. I don't have a question about the pool itself, but what I do have a question about is, a few years ago, Little Caesar's and Southfield had a contract, and they agreed to do a lot of upgrades, and they did. But one of the things that they did was they left their, all their advertising over at the.
The arena, sure.
Yeah, and the arena. And I haven't been over there recently, so I don't know if it's still there, but I think it probably is. But even though they're no longer a partner with us, they're still getting benefit from that, that advertising, when somebody comes in, Little Caesar's, you know, and are we getting any benefit from that?
What advertising are you speaking of?
They had, oh, on the wall, had Little Caesar's written on the wall.
Okay, over the concession, they're still running concession there for us.
They are running?
They are running concession for us.
I wasn't aware of that. I thought that they.
It's sporadic in the winter, but it's full bore in the summer.
Okay, I thought that they had completely moved out.
No, and they're still a rental, they're still a renter from us. They're a significant renter from us.
Okay, all right.
We did take a good deal of advertising went down, a lot of their, along the outside of the arena wall, we took down, a lot of banners came down.
Okay, we give them the same thing that, if you remember 10 years ago, when Southfield Hockey Club was there, and they did the center logo, we do the same thing for Caesar's, because they're, in effect, our Southfield Hockey Club right now.
Okay, all right, then I'm okay with that.
Do we get a percentage of the concessions?
We don't. I would consider, I mean, if anything, if we're going to get a percentage of it, we'd probably have to pay them. There's no way they make money out of the concessions. I mean, I'd be happy to forward you the receipt totals.
Do we pay utilities for them to be there?
Yes, we do.
So if we're paying utilities, then we can get a percentage.
We can certainly discuss that with them.
What happened is that we had a contract, a broader contract, that wasn't working to our satisfaction. We still have remnants, and we need a total review of the situation at the arena. We're doing it a lot better than we did, but we're still not where we need to be. So, and that is under active review right now.
That's just like, they have a restaurant right near your house, and you get no.
Can I? I said this at the beginning of the deal, but anyhow, Mr. Lamb.
Through the check, can I just interject something?
Sure.
I understand the polar points, especially the one that the mayor made, but it's a scenario of addition through subtraction. As a department, we have very little wiggle room in terms of our fund balance in the golf course concession. Five to six years ago, we were losing $60,000 a year. So if we were to take on that responsibility, we would have to staff it, we would have to buy, you know, the cost of goods that we would have to purchase and supply it, et cetera. I've been working with Jim, our team has been working with Jim, to try to come up with a viable solution to that, to provide some kind of concession where it's not going to cost us another $30,000 or $40,000 to operate, you know, concessions at all of our locations, because essentially, it would be back to the future, like we were with the golf course concessions.
Mr. Block, wouldn't you say that your department has a lot of expertise in many things, but not particularly concessions?
It's a tough situation. We're proud to elaborate that.
Yeah, I mean, and I, that we have our competition.
Five years ago, one of the main reasons that we decided to get out of the concessions of the golf courses and replace it with vending machines, and have sporadic special events with special tournaments, where we bring out a barbecue grill, was one of the mayor's key issues, was up and down Evergreen, we knew all the chain restaurants were going to be coming. You know, where I grew up on the East Coast, they used to have a concept called carryout cab. We looked into that, where if somebody had, you know, when you're in tea time, you have all those restaurants, somebody gets in their car, and if somebody wants Subway, if somebody wants Tito, but another golfer wants Tim Hortons, it's all brought there. There was no interest in it.
But you have the same situation at McDonald's Towers. The store is losing money, run by Parks and Rec.
Absolutely.
So it's.
I mean, we're.
It's not your expertise.
Right, unfortunately, we have to stick to our knitting, get smaller as a department, and, you know, the intention 10 years ago, Co-op, was to help them out. 10 years later, $20,000 a year, it's, you know, $200,000 in red.
But it may not be your expertise, but is it something that can be looked at to be outsourced and bid it out? I know that we've got Little Caesar's in there, and they're not handling, and they're collecting all the revenue. There might be another small business, we talked about the Mind Pop entrepreneurs, or there may even be, you know, another business in Southfield, or even, not even in Southfield, but another business that would be willing to come in where we could renegotiate.
Richard Scherr, we did do that five or six years ago, pertaining to the golf course concessions and the ice arena, and if it didn't work out, we bid it out. We're the purchasing department, we have Lorena Harvey, she focuses, when it comes to the golf course concession, they're just looking at the nine old course, they're looking for hamburgers, hot dogs. She was trying, she was looking at selling, like, upscale catfish, and it just, it did not, and coconut shrimp, and it didn't work out. But we're willing to take a look at our.
Try it again, I mean, just because you're following our watch, you don't.
I hear you, and we're working with administration to come up with some type of. We're not a certain situation. Okay, it needs some work, because we basically don't have much in the, for the ice, the hockey room, and we intend for there to be more hockey, more activity from the community, as well as more ice sales. I mean, we spent considerable time, now we're first class in our operation, okay? Now we've got to get into sales, and the revenue aspect heavier.
I'm just thinking of three people that I know that own businesses that, you know, if given opportunity, would be willing to bid, to go there, so. Let's consider that later.
Mr. Fraser, I'll entertain that rule ten, though.
And move, and the media need to act on this issue before.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, for a rule ten. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nays, none, motion carries. Then we need a motion on.
And we approve the requests for the Civic Center Pool Marsite Repair Project to be sent out for bid.
Support. And it's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, council.
All right, Brandy is next. Long waiting, patiently.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, I'm Brandy, I'm the city storm water manager, as most of you know, and I'm going to be talking about the update to the Alliance of Rouge Communities bylaws, which the city has been a member of the Alliance of Rouge Communities since 2005. It's a watershed group that has allowed us to cost effectively comply with our permit, I'm sorry, our storm water permit requirements to the state of Michigan. As part of membership in the ARC, we are able to pool resources with other communities in the watershed, and work on activities within the watershed, such as public education, water quality monitoring, and technical assistance, just to name a few things. We were also able to capture several, over $2 million in federal funding over the last 10 years that otherwise would not have been available to us through this watershed group. The ARC has evolved over the last eight years, and we recently achieved a 501(c)(1) status. Basically, we went for that in order to apply for the grant, and with these changes, we've updated lots of our policies, I think there are 19 new policies within the group, and we've also, so with that, we've had to amend our bylaws, and we are asking all the communities within the watershed to adopt these new amendments to the bylaws. And so at this time, we're, this is disinformation, but I'm hoping to come back on the 18th to accept these new bylaw amendments, and also appoint myself and Leach, also the city engineer, as the appointees for, to represent the city on the watershed group. And I think that's all I have right now. If you have any questions specifically relating.
Any questions? Ms. Timmer.
Don't you represent us on the, on the, what the Alliance of Rouge Communities now?
Correct, I, but as part of this bylaw about.
We have to reappoint?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is driven by a change in the state law?
I get that.
Yeah.
No, I do understand. I'm part of, at least I was on the special committee.
All right, Mr. Fraser.
Are you comfortable with the changes in the bylaws?
Yeah, they're basically just policies, like no texting, specific, in these tasks, like if the treasure wasn't available, the ice equipment would take the place, just minor changes, so I'm pretty comfortable with them.
Okay, there's one thing that I read in this draft letter, is that, it seems like the legislature, the city council is corralled into, it says, it has to be dealt with five months following the date of the, there's no flexibility, you know, within five months, it would be better to put within five months, or not later than five months, or something.
Yeah.
But it's got to do, we got to do it on.
Within five months, well.
Well, they say within five months, not the latter.
Okay, I guess we changed that for the next meeting, but in general, we need to have 19 members, of which there's 39 members, we need to have a majority of the members, membership approved before the April 7th date, in order to keep our status. But that doesn't mean if we don't get the 19 members, that we can't continue to add people for the, you know, the next few months after that.
Okay, and I have a couple other questions. In the letter, it says it's an weighted vote, and how many total votes are there? What is Southfield, if we pay the. What is Southville, if we pay the, if we sign onto this, what, how many votes do we get as far as the weighted vote is concerned?
Currently, we have thirty-nine members as part of, as part of the watershed group, and we hold, and that makes a total of four hundred and fifty-one voting shares, and our vote, we get twenty-five shares, which is about five, a little over five percent. And I think the, the communities, the largest communities in the watershed is La Bonia, and they get eight point six percent, so it's all kind of minor voting shares. In general, most of our activities and things that we vote on, we have a consensus. I don't think in the last eight years, we've actually had a weighted vote that we had, but that's just in case something comes up that, you know, people wanna call for a weighted vote.
Okay, I'm okay, thank you.
Uh, if there's no objection, then we'll move this to the eighteenth. All right, thank you, Brandy. Mr. Sherratt?
Okay, uh, staff, put together this booklet, says administration, staff, should've done the other way around here, staff did a whole lot of work, um, twenty-five members of staff. What we did is we went through the booklet that we had from the last time we did this, when Lyle Sumac and staff worked together, came up with a plan, this is the tune-up of the plan, we looked at the action plans and each of the goals, and we added some comments or some words that we, or phrases that we thought would assist in the discussion. Also, the city planner had some additional input, as well as engineering had some additional input, and building department, and those, those additional recommendations are indicated in the materials. We had some, also some of the major accomplishments, just to kinda highlight some things that the department's accomplished over this period, and some related articles, and I have listed many more, since this weekend was, was quite a noteworthy weekend. So, uh, the meeting was planned on this visioning session, there were attendance issues, and so the meeting was not held, and that's the rescheduled, and the date that suggested was the fourteenth, and so, I guess we're asking for a discussion on whether the fourteenth will work.
Mr. Sherratt?
Yeah?
Ms. President, I, I noticed that this is calling for a meeting to reschedule this visioning session for March fourteenth. I think it would be, since Mr. Fikowski is not gonna be with us, I think we should wait until all members are present. This is of interest to all council, and if we're going to do an update or a retune of this, I really think we should postpone this. He'll be back around Easter, and I, and we have, this is no emergency, we can get all of this done, I just think we should have everyone here.
Um, I can't help that he's not here, and I did talk to him about this, and he said he would fly back, um, and he told the same to Mr. Moss regarding legislative committee or economic development, so personally, I feel we need to move on with this, and we need to, it's also tied to budgets, and we're now, we're now in budget time.
How is it tied to budget? We've never reviewed this on a budget issue, and I'd like to know.
It's tied to budget by spending priorities, so what are our priorities? For instance, in this session, I would like to push inspection of rental homes, maybe we need to hire somebody else. That's gonna, you know, we're not broke, but it's how we spend what resources we have. We have less money, so we can't just add a bad here and with no regard to something else, so it's, it's really about having a discussion on what are our, our top, yeah, our top priorities. We also, let me, let's continue a little bit, we also talk about markets, that we need to do some different things with markets. Again, when you have finite dollars, what, what do we, do we cut over here so we can spend over here? In other words, it's about repositioning what resources we have. So, um, to me, I would've had this conversation if we didn't, if our agenda hadn't been so full in January, I really would've, would've had this in my brother's, as I told this Jordan in December, I would, I would prefer to have this in January, so that we, we can have months to plan and put things in place, especially as we draw to adopting a budget in June. So, uh...
Man.
Yeah?
I, I mean, all of these things we can discuss for the budget, and we don't have to do it right now, but we're talking about strategic plan, which is this thing that we did in two thousand, end of two thousand and four, we can still talk about these things for the budget, we've got plenty of time to do this. Is, is Don really gonna fly in for this meeting on Thursday?
He told me to call him.
Well, if he's not here, I don't think he's gonna do it.
And if he comes on the fourteenth, then maybe he'll stay for the eighteenth.
All right, who's gonna conduct this process? Who's gonna...
Uh, the city administrator and city planner.
That, that doesn't make sense to me, this, when we did this, we had an outside person, Lyle Sumac, take us through this process. He's a professional, he does this, he does tune us, if we're gonna do this, I think we should invite him back. I don't think it's correct to have a staff member, we're the board of directors, and if a staff member is going to direct us on this, I, I just think it's out of order. If we wanna do this, and I don't mind doing it, but I think we need to have everyone here, and I think we should invite Mr. Sumac to come back for a day, that he does tune us all the time.
I tell you, I'm not impressed by Lyle Sumac.
Well, he's one of...
He drove, he drove that, he drove us to the answers that he was looking for.
Hmm, I don't, I disagree with that.
Well, that's fine, go ahead. Pardon? Because as we kept putting up things, he just kept steering us and steering us until he got the answer he was looking for, or either he or Dale were looking for.
Dale wasn't even there, I mean, I don't know what to say to that.
Well, we have, um, I'm suggesting that we meet on the fourteenth, the administration is ready for that meeting, so I guess I need to hear from other people at the table can they make the fourteenth. Ms. Jordan?
When I saw the wording of the visioning budget priority, I thought these were two separate meetings, because normally we have a budget meeting after the mayor signs off on the budget, after it goes through the proper channels and such, and then we have a meeting, and either this room or the library, and then we go over the budget that's been presented by the administrators, but to have it tied into the visioning, I don't think that's right. I think it needs to be the visioning session, fine, and then at a later date, after we've been given the budget, signed off on the mayor, comes back to the council, then we deal with the other issues that we wanna have included, but I don't think they should be combined.
They're not actually, your point's well taken, they're not exactly one and the same, but when you vision something, then I, you have a lot of times dollars have to go towards it, so it's, it's not the budget session.
Well, the way this is, is there's visioning and budget priority, so to me, this is kinda crossed over into the budget session, so I think they have to be separate, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say, I think they need to be separate. If we're gonna have a vision and see where we're going, where we wanna go as a city council, and what our direction is, we can fight with common sense, but to mesh it in with the budget, when we haven't even been presented with a budget yet, I don't, I just don't think that's a good way to go.
All right, I'll, I'll accept your, or I accept your, your concern, and in my mind, it, they're, they're two separate things, as you're indicating, but I saw implications for budget, that, that, it, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for council to give feedback to the administrator as he starts to shape his budget. You know, in many years past, Jim did meet with us...
But when we give the budget, we are given an opportunity, we're, we're given an opportunity to give our input.
All right, then I guess we seconded it at that time, you know, we're, oh, here it is.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't see the two meshing together.
Okay, so we, we have a, a March fourteenth date, um, I'll go around the room, can you attend? Yes. Mr. Fraser?
What are we gonna talk about?
We're, we're going to talk about the, and led by the city administrator.
No, we're not gonna be, we're only gonna talk about the, that report. Go ahead, satisfies?
Yes. Ms. Jordan? Yeah, we, we talked, we talked, and you said they're not one and the same, and I agree with you. I was just thinking, yeah, that's all, I get you there. All right, Ms. Seymour?
I, I, I'm, I'm not supporting this, because I think we're doing it wrong, I think we have to wait to make sure that everybody's here, so I'm, I'm not sure that that is here.
Well, did I get a yes or, you're gonna say no? Okay, Mr. Lamb? Okay, um, Ms. Jordan?
Um, I just, I'm having doubts too, I just wanna make sure that it is strictly a visioning session, not introducing what our budget wishes, not even dealing with budget items. I think this has to be visioning, and as, and as I said before, I think the current posture that we're in in the city, I think the time that we need to sit together as a council should really be focusing on increasing our revenue. I think that's where our energy needs to be set, as opposed...
And that's part of vision.
As opposed to this wish list, but, you know, when I, I, once I'm here and I've bought this document, and we've, we've accomplished a lot, and I think we really have to focus our efforts on getting more revenue in the city, and I, I don't see where this visioning session is gonna be helpful, so I'm kinda, I'm just not sure at this point, you know, um, I'm just not sure.
Well, Lamb?
So if I had to answer right now, would we know?
I just wanna say that when we went through this process many years ago, we came out of that, a lot of people disagreed with the, with this happening, but we came out with some priorities, and a lot has changed, and I agree with what Councilwoman Jordan was saying, we need to, we need to make revenue a priority, so we need to have a visioning session so we can officially say, instead of seven members all having their own priorities, that we actually come together and make that a priority, and we vote and we talk about it. How can we get that to a priority when there's seven voices and we have to come together to say, this is our priority, so we can have a discussion? If yours is priority, then yours is, is vacant properties, and yours is something else, but how can we move forward? Because if everybody sits in their seat single-handedly with the priority, we're not looking forward. And I, I, I think that coming together to actually have those conversations, 'cause we don't, 'cause we have a structured agenda, and we're talking about the issue at hand, we, we're at a new point now, we have pissed at them, we've gone through it, and now we're kinda etching up, and it's time for us to, and I think it's respect for each other, it's an opportunity for us to say, we respect them, we're totally different, we're different people, but as, as a body, the council needs to set it, and, and, you know, I agree with you, we need to start...
Good politician.
I'm, I'm a good politician, I don't, I don't apologize for it, I think it's a good thing, as long as you, you do it well, whatever God's gift is, you do it well. Um, but I think that I agree with you, in a, in a visioning session, I would, I would agree with you in saying we need to set a priority of raising revenue, and what does that look like, and we'll have that discussion, but we can't do it if we don't come together, we'll just keep sitting here, and it's just like the visioning session for, um, inspection of buildings. We need to respect them, but he needs to hear from us, if that's a priority, then he has to come back and tell, well, how can I find this? This is, this is his recommendation. I think it helps him in his journey, instead of us every meeting shooting him a new priority, that we have come together, we, we reached consensus, we put them in order, and then we can start moving forward. This is, I think our meetings and our agendas have been more efficient because of this plan, because we have said, and sometimes we don't even notice it, when, when Jim Sherratt brings something forward, he has the symbols at the bottom, this is just this priority that we set, and it's time for us to do that. I, I just, I just agree with you.
But is it time, that's my, is it time for us to do this? That's the biggest thing, is it time? I mean, we're, we're on a roll now, we're coming out of the, um, and I don't think we're gonna be out of the, we're...
Well, returning.
So, so we're turning, so we're on a roll, I mean, I'm just not sure if we're ready to throw some new items on the table, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, I think that we find out by having that discussion.
Mr. Moss, Ms. Seymour, then Mr. Fraser?
I think this could be really, we could be turning it around and moving forward. If you look at kind of like the last few meetings that we've had, you know, the, the consent agenda's the heaviest part of the agenda, and it's all renewal requests, the annual things that come up, and, you know, we, we have to be a city that buys the toilet paper for the facilities and the paper towels and slips into the bids, but we gotta do a little bit more than that, you know, if, if, you know, we could be the city that does the, just the bare minimum just to survive and thrive, or like, like we said to the guy who was here from Northland, if you don't, if you don't, you know, come up with a wish list of what, what we can give you, or vice versa, then you'll never know our needs, and we were elected to represent the people, and I, I don't fault staff for continually to request these annual things, but I think there's a part where we have to kinda step up and say, these are our wish lists, is it feasible? Um, and it's not necessarily, you know, you know, we have all this money to spend and we allocate it in different ways, but maybe there's some things that, you know, this isn't the time to discuss this, this isn't the time to figure out if we can do concessions at Parks and Res, because they don't have the money for it, but if we don't have the conversation asked, the questions, then we'll never know the answer. So I, I, I just, I had a concern at our last council meeting, where, you know, council president sent out the council president memo of debriefing what was, or previewing what was coming forward to the next meeting, and the consent agenda was just driven by things that were annual tick-off list, and it was nothing more than that, and it was literally buying the toilet paper for City Hall.
But that's what we do, we approve the budget, we approve signatures, that's our job.
But I think we can go even beyond that, and really have a discussion of, is this a time that we can, we can do a little bit more, and if the answer's the no to certain things, and the, and that's, that's the answer, but if he, if Jim Sherratt doesn't hear it from us, then we're gonna continue to do the annual things and nothing more.
But...
All right, Ms. Seymour?
I don't know if people remember when we used to meet, um, actually, I think that it could've been here, when we used to meet on the, on the, um, budget issues, and we would meet with all the staff, and we would, we would talk, I mean, this, we, the, the place to talk about this is at a budget session, not vision with different lights, how do we raise new revenue? That's a very important thing, and Joan is absolutely right, she talks about different ways to raise revenue, we've kinda blinked at it and said, no, we should, and we could do this and this, and then we left it. That, that is part of a discussion you have at a budget session, and I don't, I don't see this as being a visioning session or a budget session, one or the other. We've had, as a budget session, we, we used to do it in two-step processes, we would have all of the staff and all the council, and people would talk about what they wanted, everybody would make a list, and then we, we would analyze it, and we'd come back and say, we can't do this because, and we can't do this because. That had nothing to do with this strategic plan and the governance plan that we went through with five, well, it's been six, seven years now. Most of those things have been accomplished, the major things have all been accomplished. We should be talking about where's our revenue coming, what are our limitations, what do we have to do? You know, visioning is like, what's, whatever we'd like to do, we can't talk about what we have to do.
Well, then, then let that be the session, Joan.
But it'd be a budget session.
I, I want, I wanted to have us get together and try to get on the same page of, on a direction, and if that's, if that's what it is, I mean, I don't wanna argue semantics here, but if that's what it is, then, then call it what you will, but we... but if that's what it is, then, then call it what you will, but we still need the time together to put it on the table.
But not just as council. We always had this with staff, and I really...
And Ms. Jordan told me the opposite. She said, "No, this should be council-driven, not..."
Yeah, it should be council. I, I agree with her. I agree with her. I'm just saying that in the, in the past, we, we've had a process that we did. We've had a process.
And we've done the process differently, because I've been here twelve years and know that some years, we just saw the budget, especially after times got tight.
Right.
Jim really did us a favor. He met with us individually about, uh, budget, but basically, we saw it in April. There were other years where we were discussing budget in, in February and March. So, uh, you know, it, there isn't, there isn't a set formula. It's been kind of driven by what's been going on, Jim's time, uh, staff leaving one thing after another in the, in the budget and finance office. Um, but I've seen nothing wrong with sitting down and trying to get us, uh, as the mayor said, we are seven, eight, counting the mayor, very different people, and trying to get some sense of what will we support? Uh, where do we wanna go? Um, and I'm sure that I can embrace a number of your positions and ideas, but I've gotta hear them. And I, and I haven't heard them.
Well, I'm not, I'm really not prepared to go into a meeting like this. I'm not ready for a meeting like this. But you also mentioned...
When will you be?
Let me finish. When we get into the budget discussions that we're going to have when the city administrator tells us. I'm not, I mean, I know there are things that I want, but I don't wanna throw all this stuff on a board and, you know, we, we did all this stuff with all these dots and all. If this is going to be led by our planner, I think that's inappropriate.
It's actually being led by Jim?
I think, maybe I can help out here.
I just think one thing.
That was nice. Yeah, yeah, that's nice. But we're talking about two different things. We're trying to keep them all in the same, in the same conversation. We're talking about a visioning session, and we're talking about a budget session. The visioning session is a strategic plan, and the strategic plan is the roadmap for how we wanna get from here to there. The budget session is a one-year thing. What are we gonna put in? The next year's budget. And I'm sitting here listening to us discuss and, and decide not to do stuff. And I'm saying that we deserve the criticism that we're getting, because we're not only kicking the can down the road, we won't even get off the stool to kick the can. We keep saying, "Oh, I can't do that. I don't wanna do that. Let's delay this. Let's not do that." We just don't do stuff. And Jim is offering us an opportunity to have a visioning session that we haven't had in seven or eight years. And most businesses do a visioning session or a strategic plan every five years. I mean, that's common. We haven't done it in seven or eight years. And we're saying, "But we still don't wanna do it." And, uh, I'm just sitting here saying, I don't know what. But I think maybe, go ahead.
No, you, you please.
I just wanna make a comment, if I may. If we're gonna do this, then we oughta have a professional come in. It doesn't have to be Lyle, 'cause we've, 'cause we've had other meetings where we've gone in to try to get council priorities. We've done it in different ways. We've gone into a hotel, we've gone to some other place. If it's gonna be a visioning session, we need to have a professional go through this with us. I, that's the way I feel. Otherwise, I think it's not a good idea.
Mr. Scheret?
Uh, today, something happened, actually this afternoon, that I think we could work with. Um, we had a meeting on, uh, of all things, water rates, as part of the budget. But it's a big issue, always is. And, um, we took a look at the capital program. And what seems to me to be coming out of this, this, what we're talking about, is everyone's pretty much on agreement, we've gotta do something about this tax base. I mean, the question is how, okay, and when, and what techniques? And how are we willing to go after it? So what I'm thinking is, even though the budget isn't totally done, uh, certainly we have the, we have the capital projects, uh, and we can make a list and see how they relate to getting our tax base approved. And maybe that's how we bridge this gap. Um, because we, you know, for example, we have infrastructure, things that we have to do to prepare the city for development, all right? So I'm, I'm thinking that if we take, just take the capital part of the budget that, that we already have. I mean, we, we have to get some detail put together, but, but, uh, maybe that's how we could kinda put this together and go from there, because it's what, everything that you said about the rental, well, guess what? That's tax base. If you, if you have rental property and it's not looking good, and tears down the looks of the community, curb appeal, you have code problems, and all the rest of it, uh, that's a problem. So it seems like we're kinda coalescing around a tax base issue here. Uh, you know, we're down, if our projections are right, and everyone knows this, fifty point oh two percent. And that's, that's huge. And we're, you know, we're continuing to get, get, get through and, and get, doing a pretty good job, I think. An excellent job, actually, but, but we've gotta, we've gotta jumpstart this economy somehow. You know, jumpstart our own, our own tax base.
I wanna with, uh, thank you, Jim. I, I wanna withdraw the budget part of this. Uh, this is not in the original discussion, and let me tell you how it, it came about. It was suggested at the council president's meeting last week, that, well, maybe this would be part of our budget. So I think, yeah, that could be an approach. Uh, always thinking, very high level or surface, you know, nothing deep, but gee, if we're the direction we wanna go to, probably we're gonna have to put some resources behind it. That's all that was intended. It was not, not a drag-out budget session. It was really about direction, where we wanna go. So, uh, I withdraw any, um, wording that has to do with budget, okay? It's really about where are we going? Uh, and try to get consensus from this, um, group of seven individuals plus one. Uh, Ms. Jordan?
Maybe one suggestion, this is my suggestion, to make it a little bit simpler, and maybe we can arrive at a consensus at a later date. If each council person would identify their top three priorities, their top three visions for the city, and bring it to the meeting, and we'll have a framework to, to start from, revenue coming to a blanket meeting. I know we have this here, but this is a lot to go through. Um, but just to make it a little bit more refined...
Well, we do that on the fourteenth.
I think you should have it on the, bring it on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Bring your three top items on the fourteenth, and either see where it fits in, you know, maybe with the, the, um, the goals that we've already identified, or just some kinda way. It can be a session that we won't be throwing things on the, on the board, and nothing really will be accomplished, but some tangibles that can be accomplished, based upon our current financial situation.
I know a, a facilitator who does group facilitation, probably might be able to come for free if she was available.
Can I refer you to the school?
Yeah, it was...
I think, no, schools are different from the city.
No, it wasn't, no, it's not, it's not school. It's about process. It's, she does this outside of school. It's process. It's not about education. It's about getting people to reach a consensus in these kind of meetings. Cow hearing and... She, she does it for, for various groups. I, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn, because I haven't, I just, to try and address Ms. Seymour.
We're gonna have an outside person. I'd like to see their credentials.
All right, never mind.
Well, that's a legitimate request.
You didn't see Lyle. We didn't, we didn't see Lyle as we used to.
No matter, no matter what it is, Joan, you find another roadblock.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm very analytical, Ken, and we're not gonna agree on this. We've had, we haven't gone through this before, and we've had, we have gone through this, this, the third time with Lyle. I thought he had a good process. You don't think so. Mayor doesn't think so. I didn't tell that he, I didn't feel at all that he was steering us. He does this professionally. I want somebody who works with councils. I don't just want somebody that knows something. If we're gonna have somebody like that, I want somebody that has worked with them.
I withdraw, so forget the discussion.
It's not a bad idea, but...
Until, until Lyle walked in the room, you didn't know that he worked with councils. 'Cause we never heard anything about Lyle until he got up in front of us. We don't know his, we still don't know his credentials, other than that they work.
You can look on his website, and you can find out. He works for cities and all kinds of groups, and he works with them on a community basis.
And a facilitator is a facilitator.
Mm.
There's a good or bad, but...
Well, I still think we have a right to know who they are and, and what they've done, not just somebody that knows somebody.
Like you say, we won't get off the stool to even kick the can.
Well, it sounds more like a game than something serious business. I, I...
Well, to me, it's not dead serious to me.
Same here.
Because one of the things that we have to figure out is succession planning. And we haven't addressed succession planning, and if we're gonna be a successful community, we've gotta know where our leadership is gonna come from.
You know, I'm, I'm trying to bite my tongue, because I don't wanna dig that too deep for it. But if seven or eight people in the entire city of Southfield should want to sit down in a room and talk about the future of the city of Southfield, it should be us. If there are eight people in the entire city that should wanna come together, it really should be us. And I, I just, I'm amazed, I'm amazed sitting here that there's every step of the way, there's another hurdle to jump through to getting us at a table to talk about the future of the city. And I know this, I know that you got a response, but...
It's about timing. It's about timing.
Well, it passed as prologue. There's been about one meeting this entire year that all seven of us have been there. So we're gonna get to a point where somebody's gonna be missing down the line. I mean, I'm okay, we can relive Walmart too. Uh, but, you know, it's...
No.
It's just amazing. That's all.
We got a twenty on it.
Okay, so, um, can, Ms. Jordan, uh, have I satisfied you, uh, or can we meet on the fourteenth? Uh, at least the four of us can meet.
No.
Okay.
I'm gonna say no at this point, because I, I don't see the benefit of it. I don't see the benefit. I, I don't want, I don't see the benefit.
Okay. I will, uh, withdraw the visioning. We will not meet on the fourteenth. Thank you for this work, Mr. Scheret. Um, we move on to, I'm sorry, Mayor. Okay, move on to communication, where's, uh, Pamela Gerald?
It's time for a change. And that change must be here, 'cause the mayor and I are agreeing on a lot of stuff. My name is Pamela Gerald. I am and have been an independent voice for the voters of Southfield. If you are listening to my voice via YouTube or audio reproduction, I can be reached at P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155, or by telephone at 248-3529188. I am just a phone call away, or a click away via email. Whenever you hear a siren, someone in public safety is risking their lives for you, one of your neighbors, someone you know, or someone else in the city. Council, are we serious about public safety here in Southfield? How are we treating our police officers? Everyone in this room is quite aware of the fact that a community is only as strong as its public safety. Council, for over a year, I have stated that we are down thirty police officers, and the numbers are probably still growing. I purport, because our police officers did not fare well in the arbitration on what should have been fair contract talks, more police may be retiring. And here's a question. If I'm wrong, how many police officers are we down? We have two cadets that successfully completed the police academy and have been cadets or police in waiting for over three years now. When are we gonna hire those guys? They too have families to support. Our cadets have taken the oath to protect and serve. They have even provided their loyalty to the residents and this city, yet they remain police in waiting. We've got two cadets that should be real cops, not delivering council packets. Councilman Moss, you said you did some research in reference to the number of officers versus the number of residents. And if that's true, you can address me later. I have a question. If having fewer officers is in line with the population, that tells me that this city, my city, the great city of Southfield, does not plan on selling houses, bringing young new families to Southfield, or attracting new businesses without giving tax abatements. It says to me that the growth has been stunted or halted. We have mortgaged our residents, police officers, firefighters, city employees, sold, giving away over thirty million in tax abatements to billion-dollar companies. How many police officers, firefighters, or other city employees could we have hired with thirty million dollars? I wish Shelley Freeman was here, because she said giving tax abatements should increase the daytime workforce. And I have stated on numerous occasions, it has not worked. The DDA said, and I'll quote, "Insufficient daytime workforce." Amazing. Even the Southfield DDA recognizes the consequences of negative perception. People have the same perception of the Eight Mile Detroit border, that crime is moving north into Southfield. We need more police officers if we are trying to increase and build up the population again in Southfield. Question to the city administration and council. If forty police officers retire tomorrow, are we prepared to hire new qualified, trained candidates to represent the city? Are these potential candidates, if we have any, really ready to protect and serve? We can't lose the well-trained and qualified police officers with long tenure. There's gotta be someone here to mentor the young guys and to show them how things are done. I'm afraid that if we continue to lose police officers due to the bad arbitration outcome, they will go to other cities and be treated like heroes if we, as a city, do not show more appreciation. Council, it is the police that respond within three to five minutes, not you. Council, it is the police that risk their lives for us when they get the radio call, not you. Any call could be their last call. Council, it is the police working longer hours for less money, under the auspices of more with less. Yet none of you have taken a reduction in your salaries, or given up the free cars, free food, free gas, and free trips. All of the employee unions have been browbeat and have given concessions to help the numbers, but not you. I'm putting this city on notice. If you continue at this rate, you are jeopardizing the people's public safety and our lives, because you have ruined the morale within our police department with the results now of the arbitration. Our police officers should not have to fight the administration and the bad guys on the street at the same time. And Ms. Jordan, I just wanna correct you. I was the first person that said that Golden Corral and Walmart would work at Northland. And you talked about, uh, bridging the gap with Eight Mile. Remember you voted the FEMA event?
All right, um, at this time, we're gonna go into a closing session.
Mr. Scheret, you're fully joined, uh, I was, um, frankly, I was a church, and this was brought up, um, in a sermon, and it kinda sparked a thought. Um, when, when I'm faith-based, and I have visited just about every faith-based community in the city, from our Greek Orthodox, our Italian, to our Armenian, to the Baptist, clergy, I pray, it's non-denialational. And you have some very professional people in different skill levels who attend our faith bases. And while we, we have contracts, we put them in newspapers, I was wondering if it would be, I don't wanna put any more expense on it, but I think it would be an excellent resource for us to send bids electronically, uh, just gonna notice something, churches, if you wanna know about business opportunity bids, then we can email them, and we can post them in your places of worship, or put them on your website. Because we always talk about being inclusive, and, you know, we, we can't put it in certain papers, 'cause it costs too much money. But I think, I mean, because when I looked around at my conversation, and think about some of the bids we have, and there's business owners right there, that, um, you know, you could really tap into our own community and, and, um, really allow them to have opportunities. And, and we need to think more of how we can engage...
And, and we need to think more of how we can engage our nonprofits in our city. We're gonna talk about revenue and all that. But I, I just think that's a great way to go, because the question was, when, you know, when you talk about empowering your community, how do we know about these contracts? You know, why, if there's a job in the city, we should, just like we, we say, we post it at Michigan Works or whatever. Why don't we send it electronically? It doesn't cost anything. And ask the faith-based, if you wanna be included, give us your email, and then you can shoot them, shoot it to them, saying about your congregation. I just, I just, I always, you know, we talk about how we're posting it. I always think that, you know, we're not getting deep enough into the masses that we can say that we're really inclusive. You know, our synagogues, our churches, you know, our, um-
We have other groups, too.
Yeah, other groups, other networks.
Synod organizations.
Yes. And so I just, and I'm not saying to increase the mail, but, you know, send a notice out to all these places and say, you know, we have this now, open to the public, and we would like to be distributed to your, um, to your congregation. So, um, Ms. Scheret.
Well, let me refer that out.
Yeah. And see, and see if it works. I just, I just thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, they could use a email blast.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And, you know, five hundred names, I, all you gotta do is type in the group name.
Or just, uh-
That, that communicates, um, our process.
And if there's, you know, if there are addresses, etc., uh, if people knew. They should know how to contact us. Uh, I, I'm a little, I'm a little confused by why they wouldn't know. But, uh, I'll check and see how, how inclusive our, our process is. But my understanding is it's quite inclusive.
But it's just a kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's like, you can tell me, why do you come to my party? You know, you can come. Well, you didn't send me invitations, you know? And, and, yeah, I know you, but if you wanted me there, you would send me invitation. And I, to me, it's a, it's a good neighbor, good, inclusive process, and, and-
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
And move it along, flow session?
And move it forward, and, and bigger.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead. But, um, you're thanked, if you have a little want, but-